Welcome to the May 9, 2023 City Council meeting. Please stand for the invocation by our Vice Mayor Chris Feraldi, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you all would join me for a brief moment of silence and personal prayer for Kingston and his family, and then I will lead us in prayer before we begin our meeting. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community and as a city, as a council, to conduct your business on behalf of your people. I pray that tonight be expeditious, efficient, productive, and honoring to you and your son. And it's in his name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask for unanimous consent that we amend the agenda for the end to allow for roll call since we didn't have a work session this afternoon.
Just do it by consensus?
By consensus, if that's fine.
Okay, to add a roll call at the end?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would also like to amend the agenda to add Skipper Holt to speak in public comment. He wasn't able to get his information in time, but he can't come again until June because his wife is going through cancer treatment, so he wanted to speak this evening.
Okay, are we okay with that? Okay, are we okay with that? Okay, adding Skipper Holt to the end of public comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so added. Okay, before we begin tonight, I wanted to recognize our Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick, who will be partially filling in tonight for our City Manager Winter Bendah. Mr. Bendah is currently at City Stadium with his wife Shannon as they proudly walk their daughter Flannery onto the pitch for her senior night. E.C. Glass plays Rustburg High School tonight, so we wish Flannery and both teams the best of luck. Mr. Patrick has been very involved with this budget process, so we know we are in good hands, and Mr. Bendah will join us later tonight. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have... Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead and vote, please.
Vice Mayor, President.
Okay, great, thank you. Next section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comment, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to counsel for deliberation. Item number five: consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for child and adult daycare centers. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Mr. Kevin Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Two-fold for the ordinance amendment there. You can see the purpose on the screen there is eliminating all area and frontage requirements for daycare centers in commercially zoned districts. This is to help promote growth of daycares within commercial districts. And then eliminating regulations for the... or excuse me, limiting, scaling back regulations on the smallest of daycares, which are known as family dayhomes. Those are 12 or less children. Those are in residential zoning districts. There on the table there is the adjustments being made to the residential districts. The commercial districts will not have to adhere to these any longer, this table that you see in front of you. Plenary Commission recommended approval, March 22nd, and this was before you at a work session a couple weeks ago, but I'll take any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Any emails or phone calls?
Yeah.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with council. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just looking forward to seeing these twinks. Want to thank city staff and the Plenary Commission for working through this and eager to hopefully have more daycare centers in the city.
Wonderful. Yes?
Especially with enough working experience. Some of our single families doesn't need more than that for daycare centers, so I'm glad to listen to some of the restrictions for daycare centers. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm for lowering regulations that allow the free market to flourish. And so we've had an issue. Removing these regulations will allow businesses to grow and thrive, and that's what the free market's about, so happy to support it.
I'd like to support it too. The other thing the public should probably know is that we have about 47, 49 children under the age of five in the city of Lynchburg, and we only have about 1,665 spots, so this is really important and helps facilitate daycare centers. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
President, pass the Senate here.
Great. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the letting of property at the Monument Terrace Building and to approve the lease agreement between Downtown Lynchburg Association and the city of Lynchburg. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Kent White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. The city's had a memorandum of understanding with Downtown Lynchburg Association for 25 years. Our agreement allows the city to take advantage of resources through the state and national Main Street programs, as well as leverage private partnerships towards enhancing our downtown. As part of the MOU, the city agrees to provide office space, and the attached police provides the space in the Monument Terrace Building where they have been for over a decade. The building also houses other municipal functions, such as the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Lynchburg Police Department offices, and CASA offices, so it's a good fit of, excuse me, of municipal partners. And this type of agreement is where we provide space for services similar to those we have with CASA, and you recently approved one with the Lynchburg Municipal Employees Federal Credit Union. Our Executive Director for Downtown Lynchburg, Ashley Kershner, is here, as well as Chris Paulswell, if you have any questions, and this came to you for a business item briefing at your April 11.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Emails or phone calls? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Matter rests with council. Any... Do I have a motion? Okay?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
Dr. Wilder?
They provide a great resource for our community, and it's so important for the Downtown Association to continue to work and continue to flourish to make sure our downtown business gets thriving, so we appreciate the work they do in our community, for our businesses. Thank you.
Captain Hugson?
Thank you. You know, as I look at this, and I think it came up before us a few weeks ago, and, you know, it seems like there is a fiscal impact. I think it's about, like, what, $46,000 a year in free rent or something like that. What's the added expansion?
Yes, sir. There's a small conference space right at the front. It's about 666... 682 square feet. We gave a high-end value on that at $13,000, really just based on market rates. Again, there is a little bit with the municipal services that are provided in that building. We're trying to make... kind of limit a lot of foot traffic because of the municipal uses in there, so I wouldn't fully evaluate it at that, but that's...
So it's just adding the conference center?
Yeah, right around the front. Opens.
And that's a 13... so the 40... so the total of 46,000 in free rent, 36 is already there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
President, pass the Senate here.
All right, great. We will now hold a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding appointments or reappointments to vacancies that will exist June 30, 2023, in school board districts 1, 2, and 3. I will ask the Clerk of Council to read the names of the citizens who have volunteered to serve on the school board and the school districts in which they live into record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's good.
Can I ask a procedural question real quick on this? So normally when we have the applicants, they typically apply, so which means we get the, you know, the application. I didn't see any of that in our packet, the application, or sometimes people put a resume on there.
No, I have been compiling this as late as 3 o'clock today.
Okay, thank you.
School District 1, we have Ms. Rebecca Turner, Ms. Deborah Traceiger, I'm so sorry, Dr. Brennan, Robert Brennan, Mr. William Bill Hawkins, Mr. Jack Shul, Mr. Michael Brosmer. School District 2, we have Mr. Stephen Wheeler, Ms. Melissa Boatright, Mr. Kita Rogers, Ms. Christina Wilson, Mr. Gregory Berry, Ms. Bethany White, Dr. Kimberly Sinha, Dr. Frederick Malachi, Ms. Diane Siliman, Ms. Stacy Link, Mr. Michael Bodnar, Mr. Michael Barrigan. In School District 3, we have Ms. Alexandra Barrigan, Mr. Roman Franklin, Mr. Andrew Glover, Dr. David Rehm, Ms. Cheryl Giggits, and Mr. Henry Baxter did apply, but then just withdrew this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. I will first open the floor to any candidates who would like to speak at tonight's public hearing. Please state your name and school district for the record. Your time will be limited to three minutes.
Madam Mayor, before we begin, I'm not sure if everyone here is... these are children here, but I don't believe it's appropriate to have folks standing in the middle of the public hearing process if they're not interviewing or applying to be on the school board.
So this is only for people?
I'll speak more directly. I don't believe it's appropriate for these gentlemen to be standing in this manner before council.
Yeah, because we have...
Point of order.
It's disruptive. It's disruptive. You need to...
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask everyone to sit down, please.
So it's my understanding that the point of order on the table is whether or not standing and turning of the backs as it relates to a public hearing is prohibited conduct under the city's rules of... City Council's rules of procedure. It could be prohibited conduct if this council finds that it is disruptive to the ongoings of the meetings. So what I would submit, Madam Mayor, if a group of this council believes it's disruptive, it would interfere with the ongoings of the meetings, and yes, it would be appropriate to ask members of the public not to stand in a fashion that would interrupt the ongoings and the efficiency of the meeting.
I mean, personally, the part that I saw that was very confusing was when you asked for people to stand up that were applying, and then we didn't know who was applying. So truly just knowing is applying.
Thank you. It looks like the argument's seated, so thank you very much, and let's continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and City Council members, my name is Robert Brennan, and I am applying for reappointment to Lynchburg City School Board for District 1. My comments tonight are respectfully directed to what I hope is the majority of council members who are participating in the school board appointment process with an open mind and with the intent to select the best board members after a rigorous evaluation of their qualifications and without a predetermined outcome. During the past six years, I participated in the three main responsibilities of the school board member, including hiring a superintendent, reviewing policies and procedures, and the development of the LCS budget. Being a board member is a major commitment of time and effort. A fellow board member estimated that he has spent more than 600 hours on board duties during his first year on the board. I can attest to making a similar commitment over the past six years, working diligently to develop the best school system for the children in our city. If reappointed to the LCS board, I'd like to continue to address a number of challenges currently facing our schools, including the achievement gap and the accreditation of our schools. During my first term on the LCS board and prior to COVID-19 pandemic, we went from having five of our 16 schools accredited in 2017 to having 13 of our 16 schools accredited in 2019. If reappointed to the board, my goal is to have all of our 16 schools accredited. Another issue I'd like to address if reappointed is the discipline problems in our schools with impact on our ability to educate our students as well as to retain our staff, particularly our teachers. Unfortunately, as we have experienced increasing violence in our community, we have experienced the overflow of that problem into our schools. If reappointed to the LCS board, I would work to partner with public safety, with City Council, and with our community to work together to address this problem. It takes a village to raise a child. I want to continue to work with the LCS parents and guardians, which are the first and best teachers of their children. In closing, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the LCS board for the past six years. During this application process, you will hear from LCS staff, community members, community leaders who strongly support my reappointment based on my demonstrated commitment to our children in our schools. I hope your decision regarding my reappointment will be based on my qualifications, my dedications, and my commitment, and not on politics. Thank you for considering my request to serve my final term as the LCS board member.
Candidate who would like to speak? You can go ahead and just... From District 1, let's go ahead and do it that way, by district. Next District 1 candidate. And then when you approach the mic, please again state your district and your name, please.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Turner, and I'm applying for the District 1 seat in the school board. My name is Rebecca, like I said, and I am the mother of four beautiful children. Three of them attend an LCS school. I came to Lynchburg in 2003 to attend Liberty University, and I got my bachelor's degree and my master's degree, and I stayed for an additional 10 years because I love this community so much. My husband's job had us move to Minneapolis for the last few years, and while I was there, while I had a successful career in healthcare, what I'm most proud about was while I was there, I felt called to be a school board member at a public charter school outside of Minneapolis. In 2020, COVID-19 brought several challenges, but we led the way by insulating our children from the pitfalls that came with the pandemic. I listened to parents. I prioritized in-person learning, allowed parents to make health decisions for their children. We implemented a rigorous reading program, and I also was fiscally responsible with our budget. We made sure staff had everything that they needed to provide a top-notch education. This resulted in our school's test scores to increase, and we actually outperformed the local district, which is supposed to be one of the number-one districts in the state of Minnesota. Our school was voted as best public school in Public Valley Dakota County Tribune readers, and because of the relationships and the community outreach, I led the way in recruiting new families to our school, and it had a 21% increase in enrollment while other districts were declining during the pandemic. The reason why I'm telling you this is because that was a very pivotal time in our country, and I just felt called to lead because no one was listening to what the students needed and what the parents needed, and that's why I feel called today. I love this town, and I'm thankful that the Lord brought me back because I've been begging my husband for us to come back for so long, because my whole family lives here, and he finally opened the door, and I'm thankful for that. I would be honored to be chosen to serve Lynchburg families as a school board member, and I hope to bring the same success that I had as a school board member in Minnesota. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from District 1?
My name's Jack Shul. I'm District 1. Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, members of Lynchburg City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm interested in a return to traditional values. Diversity, equity, and inclusion has infested our schools, and by definition demands that we judge others by the color of their skin rather than the content of their character. Equity is especially pernicious as it requires equality of outcome rather than equality of opportunity. In my view, equity is the reason schools in Northern Virginia did not recognize national merit scholars and why E.C. Glass does not allow valedictorians and salutarians to speak at graduation ceremonies. Citizens are concerned about critical race theory because it implies, in my view, a pervasive culture of systemic racism in our community, and it assumes that all whites are racist. It is insulting, it is hurtful, and it is extremely divisive. Back in the day, such insults might result in a duel at Point of Honor, which is just down the road. In July 2021, concerns about CRT prompted the school board to offer the following statement: Lynchburg City Schools is committed to creating an equitable and inclusive environment and policies that address discrimination, harassment, and bullying. I know something about being bullied, harassed, and discriminated against, and it wasn't that long ago. In the spring of 2020, anyone who questioned the conventional wisdom regarding vaccines, masking, and lockdowns was ridiculed, ostracized, and labeled a pariah. Flash forward three years later, and numerous studies have confirmed that conventional wisdom was not so wise, and many of our young people may have suffered irreparable harm because of it. Conventional wisdom might say that DEI and CRT are essential to our school's administration and curriculum, but there is another side to that story, and we need to have that discussion. While I believe parents should have much influence in what is taught in the classroom, discipline and behavioral issues should be left to teachers and administrators. In my view, when a child boards the bus or enters the school building, that child becomes a responsibility of the school system. School personnel cannot be expected to have responsibility without authority, and parents must get out of the way. A return to traditional values should be coupled with a focus on traditional learning, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Regrettably, an internet search on the state of Lynchburg City Schools reveals some alarming results. For the 2023 school year, our district average testing ranking is 3 out of 10, which is in the bottom 50% of public schools in Virginia. Our school district has an average math proficiency of 36%, which is well below the Virginia public school average of 54%, and our reading proficiency score of 61% is also below the 70% statewide average. However, we can be proud to appear in the top 1% in the diversity category. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from District 1? No? Okay. Anyone here to speak from District 2? Please say your name when you approach. Thank you.
Bethany White, Ward 3, District 2. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I appear before you tonight seeking an appointment for the District 2 seat on the Lynchburg City School Board. Now, you may ask, why should you get an appointment? What are your qualifications? One, I bring an outside perspective. I graduated from Rustburg High School in Campbell County in 1988, so I do not have an unintended bias with any of the city's schools. Two, I have experience making tough decisions with a budget. I spent three years on a large church's financial committee. I understand the impact of making tough financial decisions when the money is just not there. Three, I believe that service to a community is every citizen's civic duty. As a government professor, I teach my students to get involved in their local community and to give back. The problems in our city schools are not those of Republicans, Democrats, blacks, whites, liberals, or conservatives. They are Lynchburg problems, and we all need to come together to solve them. Our city will do better when our schools do better. Four, I love my city, my Commonwealth, and my country, and I demonstrated that love when I wore the military uniform of the Virginia Defense Force for 10 years in service to Virginia. Five, I believe in the value of a strong work ethic. During my 10 years of service in the VDF, I rose from a private first classer, E3, to an admin work, and separated 10 years later as a major and was the only battalion S3 in the state that was female. S3 is in charge of training and operations. I was the only female in that position in the entire state. Six, when I set my mind to do something, it gets done. For literally the past 20 years, I have completed six collegiate degrees and will defend my dissertation on November 17th, all while working a 40-hour job and take care of my husband. Seven, for 32 years, I have served in three different churches as a Sunday School teacher and youth group worker. I also spent the '97-'98 school year working for Lynchburg City Schools in the lunchroom. Eight, I believe in working together with others for a common goal. For the past 25 years, I've worked at Liberty University, not as a professor, but in two support offices. You learn to work with a variety of personalities to get the job done. I would like to work together with others on the school board to achieve the common goal of making Lynchburg City Schools the best it could possibly be. In closing, I'm going to give you a history fact because I am a history professor. On November 22, 1963, following Kennedy's assassination, New President Lyndon Johnson said, quote, "I will do my best. That is all I can do," unquote. If I am privileged to receive this opportunity, I will also echo Johnson's words and do the very best that I can do, because that's all I can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person from District 2?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and lovely council members, I am Stacy Link. I live in Ward 4 and School District 2. I come before you tonight because several times over the 23 years that we have been in Lynchburg, I've had people ask me about being on the school board, about serving, and I have declined. It's not the sort of thing that I wanted to put myself out there to come forward, and then this past year, my son's final year at Heritage High School, as a person who identifies as someone of mixed race, it hurt my heart to have my son come home and say, Mom, black kids keep coming up to me and telling me I have to apologize for being white. All of my children have attended Heritage High School, graduated from Heritage High School, six children who have gone through Lynchburg City Schools. The youngest starting out as a two-year-old in Hutcheson with pervasive developmental delays and is now going to be graduating, getting a diploma, and a license in carpentry, and going on to work in the HVAC program at CVCC. Others who have graduated college as magna cum laude have gotten master's degrees. Incredible children contributing to the community that I have raised. On top of that, I have received my bachelor's in psychology and a master's of special education from Liberty University, and I served proudly in Lynchburg City Schools as a substitute teacher for 14 years. This allows me a very unique perspective because as a substitute, I went into every single school and worked multiple days, multiple times, as the school nurse, as a secretary, as the librarian, as the science teacher, as an English teacher, as first grade and kindergarten, and fifth grade, and French was my particular favorite because I would go in and tell the students, I'm going to tell you everything you will ever need to know, and you won't need to take another day of French, that is, je suis désolé, and make sure that you use a lot of emotion when you say, I'm so sorry, je suis désolé. No parlez-vous français, and then the French people will say, oh, we are so sorry, I speak anglais, may I help you? And there's humor, there's love, there's respect that can be brought to our students, to our teachers, and I am a person... My mother's always said that communicating is the most difficult task that people do, and I think a lot of that is because God gave us two ears and one mouth so that we can listen twice as much as we talk. I will listen to City Council. I will listen to administrators. I will listen to students and to teachers and to others, and we will work together to keep what we have that works and to improve those things that need improving.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from District 2?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilman. I'm Kim Senna. I reside in District 2. My daughter and granddaughter both attend Sandusky Elementary. Councilman Helgason says experience matters. I agree. I've pushed the board and LCS to be data-driven in their decision-making. LCS's capacity to process and analyze data and use the results for improvement was lacking when I started on the board six years ago. This changed under Dr. Edwards' leadership and especially with the hiring of a data analyst. I helped push LCS to reprioritize Partners in Education, otherwise known as PI. Mr.'s Ms.'s... Mr. Miss Gins and Feraldi both attended the PI breakfast in November and saw firsthand the in-depth breadth of businesses, organizations, and churches that partner with our schools. I have been a strong advocate for career tech education. A prosperous city must have a well-trained workforce, and students must be engaged in forward-thinking beyond high school. I urge council to grow our CTE programs, much like Mr. Miss Gins and I had the opportunity to discuss informally after the joint council school board meeting in March. Finally, the so-called culture wars are a feature of school board meetings, as they should be, since the public and especially parents have a rightful say in public education. Yet, there is a real danger in targeting vulnerable groups in demeaning and demoralizing ways. LGBTQ students have been demeaned, harassed, and stripped of their inherent worth and dignity as persons. Of late, this has been especially true of transgender students. These are not cross-dressing predators to be feared in the bathroom or otherwise. These are vulnerable children, some as young as kindergarteners. Like all growing and maturing children, they are trying to figure out their place in the world. There is no harm in giving them kindness. All lives matter, and all students should feel that they belong in our schools. As a woman in a seventeen-year marriage to another woman, I will always advocate for LGBTQ students and fight those who bully them. If Jesus could love the marginalized, the leper, the prostitute, the gay centurion, the Samaritan, and even the much-maligned tax collector, Zac Chias, then Lynchburg can love these students, these children, as much as they love their own. Some of you are on record before ever screening applicants or conducting interviews, save you will not...
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Good evening. My name's Mike Farron. I am from District Two. Walked over here because I'm part of Ward Two. Appreciate the opportunity. I don't have a doctor in front of my name or many of the other things these candidates have that qualify them, but I do have a few things that I want to draw attention to. One, I have an experience as an educator. I've been in the education system years past, seems like lifetimes ago now, but cumulative seven years as a teacher, as worked with after-school programs, the Twenty-First Century Grant, a lot of work with students over the years. I think that gives me obviously an edge on understanding how the education system works and the challenges that are unique and diverse in the education system. I also have four boys that all attend Lynchburg City Schools, from high school all the way down to kindergarten. And so I have a pretty widespread of the different levels of education. I have a great relationship with a lot of the different administrators, the different campuses across this school system, and I think that gives me also a lot of perspective, number one, as a parent, but also as an educator, to be able to see the tension between those two camps. A lot of times, we think parents are the enemy. For years, I mean decades, the number-one indication of a student's success has been family involvement, and I know that's one of the long-term strategic, comprehensive strategic plans for the school district is to have more family and community engagement. And so I think that that gives me a critical edge there. The other thing I'll just point to is I'm a local business owner. I'm one of the partners over at White Hart downtown in Main Street. Gives me a couple of things. I think, one, again, the community engagement piece. I want us to be able to see businesses partnering with the school systems, and I think that that's a very important aspect of a school system's success, and I think I can give a lot of voice to that. But I also get to talk to a lot of people. I'm in the service industry, so I speak to a lot of people throughout my time in the day, and I get to talk to people that have left the school district or that have kids in the school district. And to be able to talk to them about the reasons and their challenges and the things that they face, I can represent a wide variety of people, not just myself. So with all of that taken, I hope you will consider me for appointment in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else on behalf of District Two? Okay, we'll move on to District Three. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of District Three? Please state your name when you come up, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Boatright. My qualifications are simply, I am a mother who is aware of some broken things in our local school system, and really, I just would like the opportunity to make a difference, open people's eyes to things that they're missing, sadly missing. Yep. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from District Three?
Good evening, Mayor Reed and council. First, I want to give glory, honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It is an honor to be here this evening. I'm a representation of District Three. Qualifications, I've been a youth...
Did you say your name already?
Roman Franklin is my name. Sorry about that. Roman Franklin. I'm a representation of District Three. Qualifications, I've been a youth minister for ten-plus years, so I'm able to see different walks of life, come through the church, understand their situations, their circumstances. Also, working as an instructional assistant at Dunbar Middle School, being able to do different roles there, from AIA to kitchen duties to meeting the students at the entryways. So I definitely understand, being from White Rock, I understand the struggle and the different issues that the inner-city kids go through. Also volunteering at the Jubilee Development Center and also White Rock Baptist Church. So I'm able to see the youth from different angles and different aspects. So I hope I'll be a candidate for school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from District Three?
Hello, everyone. My name's David Ream, and I live in Ward Three, and I would be serving from District Three. And I loved listening to the other appointee candidates speak. Many things came to mind that were similar to me as far as qualifications and so on, but the one I would like to start with, someone mentioned the assassination of JFK. It happened to be my very first memory that I actually have is the, well, I lived in California at the time in a very low-income area, and I was probably, well, I was born September twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-two, and that was nineteen sixty-three. And it's a memory that's unlike every other memory that I have. It is so early in my life. But the one thing that I do recall that was so powerful about that was the emotion and the despair that hung in the air with the loss of hope. In my neighborhood, I'm just a little boy playing in my front yard, but there are ladies, women, crying and wailing out loud in the street. It wasn't just that the president was assassinated, it was like hope had been stolen. And I couldn't have told you that at the time, being only like about fourteen months old, but I remember that is a strong force in my life. At a very young age, I received, in nineteen seventy, I received the Lord as my savior in third grade. I was witnessing to my third-grade friends in the playground the next day. One of the first calling that I really had was being a parent, and then also soon after that, in high school, it became very clear to me to become a teacher. I spent, got a general education degree, AA, got a bachelor's degree in liberal studies so that I could be a multiple-subjects teacher in California. I had that degree. I probably could redo that degree if I lived there, but then I also got a master's degree in curriculum instruction from National University in California. Served there from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and five, moved to Kentucky at the Lord's leading and served in the Kentucky schools as a public educator. Still have a valid credential there. And then with the graduation of my sons, we, as a family, moved to Lynchburg to go to Liberty University. I took a job there so that my kids could get free tuition. Both my kids graduated there, and it turns out I got a PhD there also.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for your time, and it would be a privilege to serve.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Good evening, Lynchburg City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Andrew Glover, and I am here to express my interest in being selected for the District Three seat for the Lynchburg City School Board. As a parent, I truly believe that our most important asset, our most important possession, are our children, and that what and how we teach our children now will have a lasting impact on the future. Now, no offense to any one of you up there on the dais, but I believe that whether our trash gets picked up off the curb on time, whether the buses run, whether a museum or alliance gets its city funding, or if a new proclamation to help the bees is put in place, those all pale in comparison to the importance of raising our children and providing a high-quality education. To be honest, I honestly hope and believe that you believe the same thing. So where I feel the debate enters into this picture is defining exactly what is a high-quality education and what does that look like? So in my remaining time, I'm going to try to speed through a few of the items that I've highlighted as what is a high-quality education. And really, at the core of any high-quality education is ensuring that parents are at the center of the conversation, rather than being viewed, as school board member Sinha stated at a school board meeting, as a, quote, infestation. Lynchburg City Schools needs to be a partner in education with the parents, rather than trying to replace the parents altogether. Second, to have a high-quality education in Lynchburg City Schools, we need to provide a safe learning environment. And with this, I very much disagree with school board member Brennan, who on September sixth argued against bringing more SROs into the school system. Safety really does need to be a top priority, and it's more than just SROs. I find it mind-boggling that we still don't have metal detectors at any of the high schools. And third, to have a high-quality education, Lynchburg City Schools needs to focus on the core educational requirements and not activism and political correctness. Education does not need to be, nor should be, controversial, yet LCS continues to push the envelope, which in reality is just pushing parents away. Finally, a high-quality education means bringing Lynchburg City's motto, "Every child by name and by need," to life, and this gets to my why. You're all probably very aware of my activism to get Lynchburg City Schools to not close and then to re-close. This is a picture of my child, this is my oldest son, on returning to TC Miller. He's stuck in a box. LCS put him in a ten-by-ten box. We need to not put kids in boxes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else from District Three? Is there anyone else that I missed from District One, Two, or Three who would like to speak? Okay. I will now open the floor to any citizens present who would like to comment upon any name that has been submitted or would like to offer additional names for consideration. Please state your name and district for the record. If you'd like to just line up, that's fine. Just make it easier.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Reed. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Robert Brennan tonight. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of Robert Brennan, who is seeking reappointment this summer. My objective tonight, I am a teacher in Lynchburg City Schools. I'm a graduate of EC Glass High School. I'm a twenty-five-year veteran of high school teaching. I teach mostly English at the high school, along with some public speaking. And my objective tonight is to convince you that the qualities that you value in public servants, transparency, honesty, and a dedication to the public school students of this city are embodied by Dr. Brennan. And while it might seem attractive to you to completely replace all three opening seats on the board with new individuals, I want to convince you tonight that consistency will bring you a stronger return on your investment. What is Dr. Brennan's track record when it comes to service to LCS and Lynchburg City as a whole? That can be answered in the committees that he has served on for the years of his tenure, in his attendance at school and community events around the city, including elementary, middle, and high school functions, and in his unflinching willingness to discuss and act on challenging problems that have evolved in the last few years for the city school system. You yourselves have evidence of this during the joint meetings with Lynchburg City Schools, where he has listened to your concerns and sought compromise on important issues. If your vision of budget priorities differs from his, take comfort in the fact that he is willing to hear your concerns and meet you in the middle. That willingness speaks to his transparency, and that compromise speaks to his honesty. I don't suspect that there's any member of council who doubts Dr. Brennan's resolve when it comes to doing right by our public school students in Lynchburg City. But perhaps where we differ is in the goal of a public school system, which starts in its nature as a public good. We all benefit when students receive a strong educational foundation in their formative years. You and I don't need to have students in the public school system to want the public school system to provide the very best opportunity for every single student. Seeking to curtail the services that schools provide, which some citizens have advocated to our school board, is the antithesis of public education. Dr. Brennan is an advocate for mental health services, for elective opportunities, for strong supports for our most disadvantaged learners across the system. Again, we can have a good-faith disagreement about the allocation of resources for these students, and if you look back on all of what Dr. Brennan has done and talked about, honestly, you will see a man committed to utilizing the resources of the city.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Mayor Reed and Councilman, I'm here in support of Dr. Brennan. My name is Sharon Simpson, and I live at the Villas of Stone Mill. And I'm delighted to be here on behalf of Dr. Brennan. I'll just say a little about it. Dr. Brennan is a person who can help improve our school system. He is of sound judgment, even-tempered, and his decision-making process at the school board has always been based on what is best for every student. Dr. Brennan has made student achievement his highest priority, and his goal has always been to ensure that students who are economically disadvantaged have the resources and support they need to succeed in Lynchburg City Schools and beyond. Having served on the Lynchburg School Board in the past, Dr. Brennan brings the experience of knowing the problems children and teachers are facing in this ever-changing world with dynamic solutions. He says that knowing the problem is half the battle of being able to address the solutions. For example, Dr. Brennan is a strong advocate for teachers and support staff. He has been in the trenches and can support without hesitation the Lynchburg City Schools' budget proposal for fifty thousand dollars sharing, starting salary for teachers, and fifteen dollars per hour starting salary for support staff. Dr. Brennan is not new to vision and goals, it's how he's been successful in his own practice. He has deliverables and policies that continue to give our school system direction and set priorities to achieve his goals. That's what great leaders do, and why he is the chairperson of the school board. His knack for being able to assess, evaluate, and prescribe was impetus for his first few terms. He has a willingness to collaborate... He has a willingness to collaborate and sincere interest in education in the community, and especially those who are underserved. He hires and evaluates the superintendents, adopts and oversees the annual budget. I highly recommend Dr. Brennan for a seat at the table with other masterful school board members who have a prowess for education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Danny Rule. I'm the former principal of Deerington Elementary School, current principal of Dunbar Middle School, and future principal of EC Glass High School. I'm here to speak in favor of the reappointment for Dr. Brennan for the Lynchburg City School Board for School District One. Dr. Brennan has served as a school board member for almost six years now, as he comes up on this final year of this term, and is currently serving as the vice mayor and head for two, excuse me, vice chair for two years and currently serving in that role. Sorry about that. For the past six years, he's spent time on various committees, including the Financial Committee and the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee. His commitment to LCS, though, is most relevant in his presence, and that's what I'd like to speak on this evening. You'll find Dr. Brennan at almost just about every school event you can imagine. He might be an observer or a participant. Yes, a participant. In my 10 years as principal, he's joined me in reading with students, he's joined me in getting up early and walking, doing a walking school bus for students and walking them to school with me. He even volunteered to consistently and faithfully come and mentor a student at my elementary school, along with all the work he did. He would continually do that. And he would always show up for my program, The Men of March, at Deerington. This is only one of the schools that he's represented in, and he's been available many more times than all the others. Dr. Brennan, I want to speak on one thing that cannot be given a certificate for, he can't get accolades for, but Dr. Brennan listens. Over his six years as a school board member, he sought after time after time just to sit and listen to the needs of the building by talking to school staff and leadership. I've been so impressed that he applies what he knows, that he applies what he's experienced to the decisions he collaborates with his fellow board members and makes on the interests of our students. As you consider who you would like to lead Lynchburg City Schools, I give my support without reservation or hesitation to Dr. Brennan. Please give our students that support by re-electing him and reappointing him for the next three years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
A little bit taller. Lady Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. I'm speaking on behalf of Rebecca Turner. As children were asked what we want to be when we grow up, many of us would respond "doctor," "fireman," "veterinarian," and so forth. But several of us end up taking a different path. My name is Erin Fitz, and I've known Rebecca Turner for over 10 years. When Rebecca was growing up, she wanted to be a mom. She wanted to raise a ton of kids. She wanted to love them, to educate them, nurture, and help them to be responsible citizens. That dream still has not changed. If anything, it has stretched to the children of our community. She recognizes the challenges that our children, parents, and schools face, and has boots-on-the-ground drive to resolve them. I have no doubt that Rebecca Turner would be a valuable asset to the school board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else before we move on?
My name's Reverend Joshua Pratt. I rise in opposition to reappointing any member of the current school board, based on the facts that the school board, through the superintendent, has been operating our system in a manner that has been, well, needs further investigation. Dr. Brennan worked with Councilwoman Mary Jane Dolan to close the schools during COVID. The schools were shut down while the counties remained open. Since then, we've had challenges within the public education system in Lynchburg that we have had to try to overcome. I rise in support of Rebecca Turner, an experienced school board member that's going to bring expertise to our school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Are there any emails? Oh, there's one more? Sorry. Were you hiding behind the column?
Hello, everyone. My name is FJ Jalil. I'm a Lynchburg resident. Good to see you all. And I am here to simply rise in support of your decision on making a change in Lynchburg City School leadership. I don't know if it should be one, two, or three, may not be all, but I do understand some principles of leadership and of being active in making changes that will make significant differences in teams, in businesses, and in nonprofit organizations. So I think there's a great man that said that everything rises and falls on leadership. And if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always gotten. So I believe that you can make a good change, and I just want to encourage you that people will be praying for you, many people, and I believe that you'll make a difference for Lynchburg City Schools as you make this decision. Take care.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? Anybody else hiding behind the column? Okay. Now we will take emails or phone calls.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have 11 emails to read into the record. The first is from Hugh Freeze, head football coach from Auburn University. It writes, "This letter is in support of Dr. Robert Brennan's reappearance to Lynchburg City School Board. I am Hugh Freeze, the head football coach at Auburn University. This letter of recommendation is based on Dr. Brennan's role as my physician and advisor. During my first season as head football coach at Liberty University, I was diagnosed with a severe staph aureus bacterial infection of my spine. I was very fortunate to have Dr. Brennan involved in making the diagnosis and directing my care, which resulted in the cure of my infection. At that time, Dr. Brennan demonstrated an extraordinary degree of knowledge, experience, and most importantly, compassion during my many weeks of treatment. Since then, Dr. Brennan has remained available to me to address any medical concerns that I have as a result of the infection, as well as to share his expertise during the COVID pandemic to help keep my family, my staff, and my players safe and healthy. If you are interested in appointing an individual to the Lynchburg City School Board who will be dedicated and committed to his responsibilities, as well as both empathetic and unselfish to the support of the children of your community, I recommend Dr. Brennan without any reservation." The next is from Ginger Paris, who is a teacher at Bedford Hills Elementary. It reads, "I encourage you to reappoint Dr. Bob Brennan for another three-year term on the Lynchburg City School Board. I'm glad that after serving two-three-year terms, he is interested in continuing his service to LCS. This is my 49th year of teaching and my 45th with LCS. I'm always pleased when we have an arts advocate, especially a former violin parent, on the LCS school board. I had the privilege of teaching Dr. Brennan's son Elliot to play the violin at Paul Monroe Elementary and followed Elliot's musical growth through high school and beyond. Despite his busy schedule as an infectious disease specialist, Dr. Brennan was always in attendance at his children's concerts and events. I've had very few board members who attended events in my schools. I'm amazed at how often I see Dr. Brennan at string and school events. His first year on the board, my students at Bedford Hills were playing for the kindergarten open house. Much to my surprise, in walked Dr. Brennan and spoke to the parents, not only as a board member, but as an involved father. He encouraged the parents to take an active role in their child's education. I could tell that it made quite an impression on the parents. Dr. Brennan annually attends back-to-school nights, often with more than one in the same evening, citywide Suzuki festivals, winter string concerts, EC Glass events, and more. As a specialist in infectious disease, Dr. Brennan's guidance and role in assisting with decisions helped guide us through the COVID-19 pandemic. I was relieved to have a physician involved in the decision-making process throughout the pandemic and beyond. Please consider reappointing Dr. Bob Brennan for another three-year term to the LCS school board." The next is Jill Wood, the nurse at EC Glass High School. It reads, "I am reaching out to you in support of Dr. Brennan. He has been such a wonderful advocate during COVID for our schools and nurses. He supports families, teachers, and staff when given the chance. He has served a three-year term and should absolutely be considered for another term. It would be a detriment to our school division to lose him. He shows up for the students and staff in person and for activities every time he is able. I not only trust his opinion on medical situations, but also for all school situations. He always gives calm, well-thought-out responses under stress. Please choose Dr. Brennan again for school board." The next is from Leanne McKinney, LCS parent. It reads, "I am so delighted to hear that Dr. Brennan is considering reappearance to Lynchburg School Board for a third term. Dr. Brennan has served as a board member through some pretty tough years in our educational system. I have seen Dr. Brennan strongly support a variety of school activities. He regularly attends student performances and is true advocate for our arts community. He has served as a champion for all Lynchburg City students by focusing not only on their education, but on their physical and mental well-being. Dr. Brennan has always presented himself as a practical and clear-thinking board member with the ability to present his ideas in a calm, rational manner. He's an asset to the school board, and we are lucky to have him. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on his behalf." Number five is from Jennifer Mariner, a second-grade teacher at Deerington Elementary. It reads, "Dr. Robert Brennan is one of the finest men I know and a very dedicated school board member. He has been coming to read to my class twice a month for several years. He engages the children in the stories he reads by asking questions, and they look forward to him coming to see them. He is always kind and patient with them. He and another Desi volunteer fully funded my Donors Choose project during COVID, which was to create math kits for students to use at home during remote learning. These kits with manipulatives made Zoom meetings more effective and enhanced student learning during this difficult time. Dr. Brennan attends many activities throughout the school division to show his support. I have seen him at back-to-school nights and award banquets, to name a few. At the school board meetings, he makes decisions that are in the best interest of the school, faculty, staff, and students in Lynchburg City Schools. He's a pillar in our community, serving others faithfully, and I would like to see him continue in his role as a school board member." The next is from Jim Ackley on Woodland Avenue. It writes, "To the Lynchburg City Council, I am writing to you as a lifelong resident in Lynchburg. I attended Paramount Elementary School and Robert E. Lee Junior High, and I am proud graduate of EC Glass High School, where I also taught for 37 years before retiring in June 2014. I'm a graduate of Virginia Military Institute and have done graduate work at VCU and EVA. My purpose in writing is to enthusiastically my voice to support the reappearance of Dr. Bob Brennan to Lynchburg School Board. Dr. Brennan has proven his deep, genuine interest in city schools by serving two-three-year terms on the school board. The service has also given him a wealth of knowledge about the city schools and how they operate for all students. He's the current vice chair of the board, which has given him critically important leadership experience that can be of great help to everyone involved in decision-making for the future of LCS. As the director of drama at EC Glass, I was appreciative of Dr. Brennan's enthusiastic support of the LCS arts programs, first as a parent of two student participants, then continuing as a member of the school board. His interest in LCS is not limited to the arts. I regularly see him at sports contests and academic competitions. When I was teaching, he was regularly visiting schools, observing classes, and attending student activities. Since I retired, he has on several occasions sought my thoughts on specific issues, recognizing that a veteran teacher would have a viewpoint that would be an important contribution to the current deliberations. Bob Brennan is a sound, level-headed, and kind gentleman who had been a terrific board member and deserves the opportunity to continue to serve. The people of Lynchburg are indeed fortunate to have someone of his caliber and intelligence willing to serve on such an important civic body. I urge you to take advantage of his desire to continue to serve and reappoint Dr. Bob Brennan to Lynchburg City School Boards. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to express my opinions on the critically important decision." The next one is from Amanda Myers Ramirez, who's the lead instructor of Central Project Search. It reads, "I just wanted to contribute my thoughts and wishes for Dr. Brennan to be re-elected to our LCS school board. Dr. Brennan is a calm and level-headed presence and an advocate for our schools and community. As a teacher, parent of LCS children, and a taxpayer, I fully support his reelection." The next is from Amy Thompson, who is an EC Glass High School arts teacher. It writes, "I am writing to make the request that Dr. Brennan be reappointed for city council. He's a great advocate, and I would like to see that he stays and continues to assist LCS." The next is from Allison Smith from EC Glass High School. It reads, "As a taxpayer and a mother of two Lynchburg students, I am asking that you reappoint Dr. Robert Brennan to the school board. Dr. Brennan is trustworthy and sound. He has served on the school board for six years, brings wisdom and perspective to decisions, and is the only school board member I see attending school events on a regular basis. He and his wife are loyal supporters of the Boosters Club, too. Dr. Brennan is the kind of presence Lynchburg is desperate for now amidst of all the negativity coming from council. He is level-headed, intelligent, and puts the well-being of schools above all else. I ask that you reappoint Dr. Brennan." Number 10 is from Dr. Stephen Smith, Director of Central Virginia Governor's School for Science and Technology. It reads, "Dear Lynchburg City Council members, as the Director of Central Virginia Governor's School for Science and Technology for the past 13 years, Lynchburg resident since 1985 and longtime follower of both the Lynchburg City School Board and Lynchburg City Council, it is my pleasure to write a letter of support for Dr. Bob Brennan to return to the LCS school board for a third and final three-year term. Dr. Brennan is highly qualified and deserving of the opportunity to continue his service to the city through reappearance to the LCS school board. Dr. Brennan has been involved with the schools for 30 years as an active and involved parent and public school advocate. His service to the school board over the past six years has been characterized by obvious preparation prior to school board meetings, thoughtful and respectful discussions with others on the board, and intelligent and student-centered participation in decisions large and small. Dr. Brennan has not only demonstrated strong leadership as a member and vice chair of the LCS school board, he's also demonstrated a willingness to help public school students directly through his work as a physician and infectious disease specialist. For example, Dr. Brennan's consultations with me during COVID-19 pandemic were of immeasurable value, helping our school minimize the amount of time we needed to serve our students in a synchronous virtual format and giving our governing board and me confidence to move to a hybrid format when we return to a fully in-person model as soon as possible. For several years, Dr. Brennan and his colleagues and infectious disease associates of Central Virginia have also supported our students, the largest portion of which are from LCS, through tuberculosis screening for all of our 11th graders prior to participate in internships each spring. In summer, for decades, Dr. Bob Brennan has demonstrated his willingness to be an engaged community member of the city of Lynchburg, and for the last six years, he has been an effective and committed LCS school board member. I hope you will call me if I can provide any additional information supportive of his application for a third and final term." The last one is from Dr. Charles Pryor, who says he's a former member of the LCS school board. "This letter is written in strong support of Dr. Bob Brennan's desire and candidacy for a final three-year term on the Lynchburg City School Board. Dr. Brennan has served a vice chair of the school board and is now serving as vice chair. The school board is very fortunate to have a person of Dr. Brennan's competency and character with strong attributes of caring for the well-being education of students. He offers common-sense solutions to the most pressing challenges facing the school system. Dr. Brennan is a person of strong character, very community-minded, and dedicated to the hard work required to be an effective school board member. I strongly support and endorse his candidacy for a third and final term on the LCS board." And that is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Traditionally, council chooses to hold over the public hearing to the following meeting to allow for more citizen input and the opportunity to receive more applications. Is there a consensus from council to leave this public hearing open to the May 23rd council meeting? Yes? Okay. Great. Thank you. Our next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. I would like to commend you all for this tonight, and if you appreciate a comment that someone makes in a positive way, continue to do this. Otherwise, please refrain from booing or making any other disruptive sounds, please. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Tim LaCoulst. Okay. Let me pause here. If I mess up your name, because we have such a wonderfully diverse community, and I'm doing my best to pronounce names right, but just give me some grace, and please, if I really ruin it, please correct me so I can say it right the second time. Please restate your name and your locality or residence. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Tim LaCoulst. I live here in Lynchburg City. I'm a teacher, which means some of you have already probably tuned me out, because you know why I'm here. But I'm not going to do what you've heard people eloquently do, so I'm going to do what I do. I'm going to tell you a story. I have two daughters, two beautiful daughters. One is 18, and when she was born, she was given this doll. This doll went everywhere with her. This doll went everywhere with her, didn't matter if it was a restaurant, didn't matter if it was church, it went with her. Then we got a dog, and the dog did what dogs do and chewed up this doll. The baby lost an arm, a leg, and a few hands and feet, and all was great. Not. I went to the store like any good dad, got the same doll, brought it in, switched it out during naptime, and my daughter just wanted the broken doll. That's the doll she loved. That's what teachers do every day. You see, I work at Dunbar Middle School. Today, I was at RS Payne Elementary. We see the broken daily. We help council teach. You get to hear from people and members of this great city tell you what we do, but they don't step in and actually do what we do. We love dearly, we sacrifice greatly, we give our time, our energy, our money, and we pour into the broken. All the while, we're hurting, we're broken, because we're human, we're people. The 1550 might be off the table, and you might have gone to itemizing, but let me remind you that you all were students, too. And if I asked you to look back and think back as to the people that impacted your life, you could tell me, Coach, you could tell me the secretary that gave you a Band-Aid. Itemizing and going and putting money into instruction neglects those that sit in the front office, who push the broom, who clean up after. So I'm asking you to do as my daughter did. Reach out to the broken. Give back to us, who continually pour out daily to those students, to those families that are broken in the city. You want change, we do, too. Help us make that change by keeping teachers and staff here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now hear from Red Sessofisco. Please restate your name and locality or residence.
Yes, it's Red Sessofsky. Thank you. So I'm here to talk about the real estate tax, to voice my concern for the future of the Lynchburg community. I feel every citizen has a right to community services and programs. Otherwise, what is the point of belonging to a society? From personal experience, the opportunities, the Lynchburg Public Library and the Parks and Rec offer are indispensable. They not only bring people together, but they build and strengthen the community as a whole. In terms of Templeton Senior Center, elderly people have the right to fellowship and community just as much as the next guy, but Templeton offers much more than just senior programs. It brings in people of all ages and enriches their lives. I would say along the same line of reasoning that the Public Library does the same. As someone who runs a small business, I rely on the library for many of its services. I would happily continue to pay a dollar or even more in taxes, as long as I'm sure the money goes to public services like the library, museums, and the Parks and Rec. These services are already, in my opinion, the bare minimum. Cutting them further would be a disservice to the city of Lynchburg and all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there a Maria with a very long last name that starts with an N and ends with CZ? Do you know how to say this word?
I would go to the next one. Like how?
Anyone?
Maria?
Okay, we'll come back. Rebecca Anderson. No? Okay. Alexandra Smith. Please restate your name and locality, please.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Alexandra Smith. I'm a resident of Lynchburg, and I belong to Ward Three. I'm here to comment on the proposed property tax cut to 89 cents per $100 of assessed value and the corresponding gap reduction measures. I'm an attorney, I'm licensed in Virginia and Washington DC. I'm a graduate of William &amp; Mary Law School. I moved to Lynchburg about two years ago. I grew up in Richmond and had never been to Lynchburg before my job interview to come here. I came from work, but I fell in love with Lynchburg. I fell in love with Lynchburg because of the creative, supportive, and close-knit community here. I bought a home here in December. I have settled in at a local law firm, where I love my job, and I want to stay in Lynchburg and remain a homeowner here, as well as a productive member of society and lawyer here. But services like the museums, the Templeton Center, and the public libraries are what makes the city livable and a place that I want to be. I use these services and programs. My clients use these services and programs. I am glad to have my tax dollars support programs that provide community for people of all ages and allow everyone to explore new hobbies, learn about history, and use their hands, hearts, and minds. I am now 30 years old, and in the next 10 years, I may want to have children. I want my children to have a good school system, good libraries, to go check out books like I did when I was a kid. Places like Amazement Square, art programs, and museums. This is all part of the community that I want to raise kids in. If Lynchburg no longer has these community programs and services, I will not stay in Lynchburg. I support the 94 cent or 99 cent per $100 of assessed value property tax rate. I do not support the 89 cent per $100 of assessed value property tax decrease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please restate your name and your locality. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beverly McCloskey. I'm not sure if you have this or not, but we passed around. Madam Mayor and City Council Members, as I said, my name is Beverly McCloskey, and my husband and I have lived here for over 10 years. We have four beautiful girls, one attends EC Glass, another Linkhorn Middle School, and two at Paul Monroe. And my husband and I are both products of the public school education system. My husband graduated from Syracuse University, and I graduated from Auburn University, and we both have Bachelors of Architecture degrees. We spent the first eight years of our marriage in New York City and then in Hong Kong, and when Jim's job called us back to the States, I wasn't super thrilled to be moving to Lynchburg. But I quickly discovered that Lynchburg was a great place to raise a family. We made fast friends with families that knew firsthand the strength of this public school system, and the McCloskeys dove headfirst. We read books at storytime, donate classroom supplies, we volunteer at school events. It's our privilege to donate our time, our talents, and our resources to our school system. Every year, we are overwhelmed with the dedication of our teachers to love and to educate our children. All the LCS teachers I've met have servant hearts. They truly, truly love our kids, and they want them to be successful. They are not doing it to get rich, but they see the true value in investing in our children. I'm supporting Superintendent Crystal Edwards' 1550 plan. They are not presenting some pie-in-the-sky wish list. 87% of this budget is LCS's salaries. Don't fool yourself to think that we just need to catch up to the surrounding counties' base salaries. They are raising their pay scales, too. I know of a former LCS teacher who has no choice but to leave the school for better pay. He now commutes an hour and a half to get an extra $15,000, and we lost experienced teachers. The demand for quality teachers, it is at an all-time high, and some of you are laser-focused on 89 cents. Your city manager and team of professionals did what you asked, and they proposed reduced tax rates, and they proposed level funding. You should have been thrilled with that and signed on the dotted line. Right now, you should be spending your time getting into your schools and the team of administrators and teachers that get up every day to be there for our children. In your first months on this board, you should not be trying to undermine LCS professionals, questioning their honesty, and concocting your own model of category funding. LCS is asking for what they need. They've already made cuts to their budget as asked. Now it's time for you to be reducing, now it's not time for us to be reducing funding. If anything, we should be finding ways to give LCS more money. The success of our community depends on the success of our children. I fear that some of you genuinely don't care about children and actually want them to fail. You simply see this as a stepping stone to a higher office. If you want to retain dedicated teachers and family like mine, you will do the right thing and locally fund the 1550 proposal, putting our children our precious assets as your priority.
Thank you very much. Megan Lucas from the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance.
Good evening. My name is Megan Lucas. I live in the Lynchburg Regional, I live in the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance? Yes, I do. Every day for the past 10 years. It's a great place to live. But I live within the city of Lynchburg, and first, before I get to my prepared remarks, I want to say thank you. It's not easy running for office. It's not easy winning an office. It's not easy being in office. It's not easy serving. So thank you for having the courage to do that. It takes a lot of courage. I haven't done it, and I won't be doing it, because you have the courage to do so, so thank you. I'd like to take this time to thank you for continuing, thank you for continuing the economic development partnership between the city and the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance by retaining funding for the fiscal year 24 budget. Continuing this partnership sends a strong message that the city of Lynchburg is committed to economic growth, opportunity, and working with our regional businesses and partners to affect, to attract, retain, and develop the best talent and with the best skills. You know, I've often said, one of the reasons I got into economic development was because I believed that the greatest force of change is a job, and economic development is about growing and retaining and recruiting new jobs and capital investment and retaining the existing jobs in our region. Investment in Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance increases our region's competitive advantage, helping us to recruit and retain more businesses in the Lynchburg region, which creates jobs, investments, and innovation, as well as increasing the city's tax base, such as we did with projects like Cloudfit and more recently, Delta Star. The city of Lynchburg and the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance have maintained a strong partnership, public-private partnership, for many years. Lynchburg's commitment to regional economic development, workforce development, has been crucial to unprecedented cooperation and collaboration between Lynchburg and all of our local government partners. Thank you for continuing to be a part of a regional economic development partner. We look forward to every engagement we have showcasing this amazing city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, please correct me when you come up.
Eric.
Eric, okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Michael Eric. I'm a resident of Lynchburg, and I've been informed that there's a proposal to close the Templeton Center, and I've also been told that it was put back into the budget again, but it's going to be voted on, still going to be voted on. Is that true?
I can't respond.
You can't respond? Okay, well, I'll give my, I'll give my short presentation then, in case. I do have a flyer here for May for the Templeton Center, just for the month of May, and I'm in favor of keeping the Templeton Center open. On the handout, it shows that there are activities just for May: bridge, canasta, yoga, tai chi, knitting groups, social dominoes, don't know what that one is, lots of dance classes, line dance to Afro-Caribbean dance, adult, teen, and child classes, conversation cafe, recycled paper art, acrylic painting, watercolor, and more. My connection to the Templeton Center is the Hill City Writers Group. I've taken painting classes at the center, did yoga for a couple of years, attended talks, but my main interest has always been writing. We meet every Tuesday evening from 6:00 to 8:30, and we just finished meeting tonight, although I'm over here. It's a critique group for local poets, writers, and even a cartoonist. Last week, we had 18 people, and three new people showed up and sounded only by the Parks and Rec newsletter. Something that the Writers Group also offers to the community are Parks and Rec classes. We recently did a presentation on blogging and arranged for a local couple to speak on CBD oil, growing, harvesting, processing, and the effects, pros and cons. Both are very well-attended, and we're currently scheduled for presentation on self-publishing, and these are all free to the public. Templeton is the only senior center in the surrounding counties, and for many seniors, it's their primary social outlet. But it's not just seniors, it's also for middle-aged, teens, and younger. The Writers Group has seniors, plus people in their 50s, 40s, 30s, and sometimes 20s and younger. If the center's closed, all this goes away, plus the loss of additional activities that are scheduled off-site. So employees will lose their jobs, the employees at Parks and Rec are already stretched thin and probably cannot take on any additional load. So how would this closure affect the community? It would become a much blander place to live. Bland. Is that what we want? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Followed by Jim Richards, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Representatives of Council. My name is Zach Carnavas. I reside in Ward Three. I noticed we were talking, been following you guys, and you were talking about the 23-24 budget, and I want to thank all seven of you guys for being in full support of public safety. I would like to see continuing support of public safety, because it is important that the police, firefighters, EMS, sheriff, and Commonwealth attorneys receive the proper funding and resources to keep everyone safe in all situations, and so the first responders are able to be on the scene in a timely manner. I would also like to request to approve the Lynchburg City School Board's budget, so that Lynchburg City Schools can meet the students' needs. This budget will ensure correct amount of inventory for cafeterias, cleaning supplies for buildings, as well as the 1550 pay scale to recruit, hire, and retain highly qualified staff to ensure the quality of content delivery to all students, because our students are our future. I thank you for your time, consideration, and I hope you all have a blessed evening. God bless Lynchburg, Commonwealth Virginia, and United States.
Thank you very much. Jim Richards, followed by Margaret Ann Tyler Johnson and Steve Bartholomew.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. My name is Jim Richards, and I reside in the city of Lynchburg, actually right across the street from Mr. Patrick there. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight as a member of the Board of Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance and as past Chair of that organization. I thank you for your continued support of the Alliance and your investment in Lynchburg's and the region's future by retaining funding for the Alliance in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Economic development is in part about getting in front of the right people with the right message continually. With the many things you fund, like quality schools, a well-trained and robust police force, a responsive and well-equipped fire department, nature and hiking trails, quality drinking water, downtown infrastructure improvements, to name a few, you have created a great message and a wonderful story to tell, and for that, I thank you. Your partnership with the Alliance allows that story to be told in a compelling and effective way to those who need to hear it. Investing resources long-term can sometimes be challenging politically. I thank you for your courage in making this investment, and I congratulate you on your vision and foresight in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Margaret Ann Tyler Johnson? Okay, Steve Bartholomew?
Yes. Hi, my name's Steve.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Is that Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Did you, you ready to speak?
Yes.
Okay, it's your turn. Sorry, sir.
Is she, is she up next?
She is, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Your follower. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I come today because, speaking of the budget, I don't believe $362,047 should go to police funding. I believe that y'all need to find programs for our younger youths to use that money so that these youths can have places to go. Adopt -- I think that we should adopt a program, leave no young youth behind. I believe that you should invest in that and find a budget for that and to do that. Now, my real reason that I'm here is to discuss -- give me one moment. I'm sorry. I'm here to really discuss public safety. I've -- it's been four years, five months that I've been waiting to come before the council members. I was assaulted February the 7th of 2019 while in handcuffs and in motion. I've complained several times to everyone, even Governor Yonkin's office. I also, as you can see, I have a -- that's because my life was threatened. Police was called several times, and they did not respond to my apartment. So now, I'm left speaking like this for the rest of my life. Can you imagine that? When I can't pronounce the words that I once pronounced? Can you? Can any one of you? I'm left with this, like I'm uneducated, like I can't pronounce words, because that's what I am now. Due to that, I saw it. Tonight, I'm here, and I'm asking you to resolve this matter for me, exonerate me because I was not guilty of the charges that was brought against me, because I came for it with my complaints. And with my complaints, it fell on deaf ears. You've gotten all the names I've sent to your email. You, too, Mr. Misham. I have evidence of everybody I've spoken to. Mayor Dolan, you surprised me. The last time I spoke to a mayor was Mayor Foster, and she came, and I want to tell you about the injustice that I came into. I was homeless, me and my son, and we wanted to stay together. So we went to Salvation Army. They gave me a dirty urine and broke me and my son up that night. I chose to sleep at my niece's house, but it was something killing me inside. A dirty urine? Never me. I'm not a drug head. I've never done drugs. But because I was put --
Thank you.
-- in greenfields.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I became a statistic.
Thank you very much.
I'm not finished yet. I would like to see if you could exonerate me.
I'm sorry. I have to.
Before I leave out of here, because I have a warrant for my arrest.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything that any one of y'all can do?
Ms. Johnson, I have to ask you, sit down, please. Thank you.
Y'all have a blessed night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, off the record, Ms. Stephanie Reed, I voted for you.
Thank you.
And I believed in you.
Thank you.
And I don't have any other family members now, because I'm the only one in my family. I would have took this chance today, but I'm too busy. Bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Bartholomew. Followed by Jeff Rosner and Sharon White Simpson.
I'll make this brief. I wanted to just mention a couple of things about the debate going on about the property taxes. And I think that I don't see enough focus on the fact that the property values have been reassessed. And I talked to the assessor's office, and apparently, the average increase in residential property value is 25%. I know in some cases it's going to be a little bit more, and apparently, for lower-priced homes, that would be the case. And for some higher-priced homes, it's going to be a little bit less. But this chart makes it quite clear that at a 25% increase in residential property values, even at 89 cents per hundred for the tax valuation, there would be an increase in revenue compared to what the value would have been at -- I used a dollar five. And I'm well-aware that that number is flexible. It's -- I've seen it at a dollar, a dollar one, a dollar five. I used a dollar five. And so, as you can see, everybody knows that the property values in Lynchburg have been going up, and the average value is a little north of $250,000 right now. So if you take the number 300,000 for the property value at its original value of 300,000, the revenue would be $3,150. With a 25% increase, the value increases to $375,000, and at 89 cents, there's more money made than there would have been at the original value at a dollar five. And so, I'll leave this chart, but I just want to make one more point, too. We all know that there's a lot of problems in public education in our country. And I don't think the answer is going to be solved by more money, and I think that's been proven over and over again. The answer is to reintroduce into our schools the Bible and prayer. That is what is going to solve the problems in our schools. So I thank you very much for giving me this time here. I'm not a public speaker, as you can tell.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Rosner, followed by Sharon Simpson, and then Kathleen Davis. Mr. Rosner.
[inaudible]
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jeff Rosner. Since March, the Lynchburg Electoral Board has been seeking and considering applications for the position of General Registrar. At the May 2 electoral board meeting, which I attended, it was reported that the city attorney had advised the board that the proper procedure is to renew the registrar for another term, then evaluate the registrar in July. At that point, termination or other disciplinary action might be appropriate. Nevertheless, the board voted two to one to continue considering applicants, voting against the legal advice of the city attorney. Earlier, the board directed city human resources to announce the position, post an announcement, including two incorrect statements. One incorrect statement in that announcement is that Section 24.2-110 of the Code of Virginia requires seeking applicants for the position. It does not. The other incorrect statement is that Code Section 24.2114 has a full listing of the duties and powers of the General Registrar. It does not have a full listing. It does not include the requirement that the registrar take an oath to impartially discharge all duties. That oath requirement is in another section of the code and in the Constitution. Also, an Attorney General's opinion says registrar should perform official duties in nonpartisan fashion. The announcement did not inform applicants that they would need to be impartial and nonpartisan. It should have. So this process has been seriously flawed in several ways. And finally, let me just quote, without any comment, a Facebook post from a board member who voted to continue considering applicants. Quote, "When the Electoral Board, Registrar, and Deputy Registrar are removed, things will change," unquote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sharon Simpson, followed by Kathleen Davis, and then Peter
Mayor Reed, and council members and other officials, thank you again for this opportunity. So I attended the Electoral Board meeting on Tuesday, May 2, 2023. I left that meeting dispirited and thoroughly confused. First of all, I was shocked to learn that the current registrar and deputy registrar's jobs were not being renewed. Was this something that the current registrar, Christine Gibbons, was aware of upon her being hired? At the meeting, she appeared flabbergasted. In fact, she spoke up and said that all of her evaluations were excellent, so how could she be losing her job? How could the Electoral Board have already advertised the job? This was mind-blowing to observe. And then, we all learned that the Secretary of the Electoral Board, newly-appointed Ms. Betty Gibbs, demanded personnel files, all on the election officers, which I am serving as an elections officer, and the chief. In fact, Ms. Betty Gibbs made copies of our information and has it stored on a laptop. Why was it necessary to take our information from under lock and key from the deputy registrar, whose job it is to secure our information? During the meeting, one of the chiefs asked why Ms. Gibbs was removing our information and taking it out of a secured area to her home, and who authorized her to do so? Who was observing her and our personal information? Finally, we received a response from the chairperson, David Newmeyer, who said, and I quote, "We work part-time and have to take work home." Well, that's unacceptable. I then left the meeting, and I contacted Circuit Court Judge Patrick Yates, requested a meeting regarding the concerns I just shared. And then, I contacted the president of the Lynchburg Voters League to share that same information. And I'm going to skip down here. The Electoral Board, by majority vote, may remove the registrar if they fail to discharge the duties according to law. Question: How is the Secretary of Elections vetted? Who does the vetting? Was the current Secretary of Elections vetted? If so, by whom and when? If that person has not been vetted and is in the role of Secretary of Electoral Board requesting information from the registrar and the deputy registrar, as well as performing duties that are in discretion, where is the accountability? Inappropriate behavior, such as making copies of election officers' personal information, is not in the scope of the Secretary of Electoral Board when that is there, when the registrar is there and the deputy registrar is in place. Additionally, it's not required that the Secretary of the Electoral Board perform their duties. I am deeply concerned, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathleen Davis, followed by Peter Sepharati and Nicole Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us this evening. I'm Kathleen Davis. And if you go back and you really listen to everyone who has spoken up for Lynchburg City Schools, you won't hear many people say, "Keep it at 111." We're fine with a tax cut. What we're not fine with is compromising on our children's education. What we're not fine with is being the lowest -- one of the lowest-paying divisions for educators in Virginia. We're not fine with being one of the only school districts in Virginia to decrease funding for schools after an international pandemic set our students back in their educational tracks. Marty Missions said in a Facebook post on his Public Councilman page that we, those who are pro Lynchburg City Schools, are screaming and crying. And that's probably the first time I've seen him post something that could pass the smell test on snopes.com. We are screaming that our city council members are acting worse than the children they are charged to look after. We are crying about the three children who have been murdered in this city since you all took office in January. We're angry that big government, or Marty Missions himself, thinks it's within his scope of duty to threaten to fire a superintendent because he failed to read a play before he tried to have it canceled after Lynchburg City students spent months working on it. We are scared about y'all, what y'all will do next to infringe upon our regular lives, regular people doing regular things like coming to city council meetings and being called a groomer and a pedophile by your friends. Show this city you couldn't star as all three main characters in The Wizard of Oz and get a brain, get a heart, and Larry Taylor, please show us your courage.
Thank you. Peter Sepharati, Nicole Sanders, and Jennifer Williams.
Hey, good evening, Peter Sepharati, citizen of Lynchburg. Hello. I, and most of the others I speak to about the Lynchburg schools, fully support the school system and the teachers, which develops a high percentage of well-educated graduates. That means competent in math, science, history, civics, language, and communication in a minimum, also capable of gathering and evaluating information and making informed decisions about issues that determine the course of their lives. Graduates like this are otherwise known as good citizens and are a benefit to all of us. So from what I can find, Lynchburg schools are not highly rated compared to others in the state, and those ratings seem to be declining. The school system seems -- exists to educate students. Anything that distracts from this purpose should be eliminated from the methods and practices of the school system. Changes to the current practices, which deliver a better education, should be implemented. There must be more accountability for the resources spent and the quality of the education delivered to our students. With this in mind, I urge the council to appoint school board members who will evaluate our school system and promote changes which lead to student success. Please choose people who will ask hard questions and promote potentially difficult changes, because changes seem to be needed. Here are some questions we would like to have asked and answered. What are the most important goals of LCS, and what is the board been doing to achieve those goals? How would you rate the educational environment in the classrooms? Are students expected to maintain a quiet, orderly, respectful classroom environment? And if not, why not? How can the school board better support teachers who have to deal with serious discipline problems in the classroom? We're asking too much of our teachers. Do you recognize the negative impact on classroom atmosphere of social activism, such as critical race theory ideas, promotion of equity, gender issues, and other non-academic training? What is the social and fiscal cost of focus on these things, and does it affect the education level of our students? Could the LCS produce better-educated students by allocating resources differently, more strategically, instead of spending more money on fewer students every year? Are you open to consolidating school buildings to divert more funds to the classroom education efforts? What can the education bureaucracy and city government do to get parents more involved with their city's education? We, the people of Lynchburg, need to have answers to these and other questions, so we can judge the education system we're paying for. In closing, just a comment about the vote on the new property tax rate. I know much thought went into setting this rate and the revenues it would take for property owners. I urge the council to hold firm on the 89-cent rate, and I point out that the new budget will include a contingency fund, probably in the range of $20 or $30 million, sufficient to pay for any revenue shortfalls that may develop. And I repeat what others have stated about the matter. Really, anyone who believes 89-cent rate will hurt the city's specific services they favor is allowed to pay property taxes at any higher rate they deem necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Williams, followed by Conssuela Mosley and Andrea Hurt. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Nicole. I apologize. I wasn't playing favorites with Jennifer.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Sanders, and I live in Ward Three. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Feraldi, members of council. I am speaking tonight basically to implore you guys to support the city manager's budget proposal of a dollar five for property taxes. This represents a tax decrease, and I think it will provide us with a balanced budget, one that supports our city schools and our teachers. With the 89-cent tax rate that's been proposed, many cuts to the city budget will need to be made. And in order to mitigate some of the more egregious cuts, council has now proposed to reduce the amount of money allocated to LCS and introduce what they call categorical funding. So what exactly is categorical funding? This will allow This will allow city council to bypass the expertise of Superintendent Edwards and the school board in order to direct funding to their own priorities. And so, what are some of these priorities? One of their priorities is the classroom, which actually sounds great, doesn't it? As an educator, I would love to have more money directed to my classroom, to have more funding for my salary. I would love more money for resources. But what would get cut in order to provide that? A lot of suggestions have focused on cutting administration. That people have come up and said, "Well, we'd get rid of all of administration in LCS, and that, we can shift all of that money to the classroom." Again, as an educator, I'm not often put in the position to defend administrators, but in this case, I'm going to. I think it is short sighted to think about cutting administrators because administrators do perform very necessary tasks for the school. They handle scheduling, they handle IEPs, citywide programs, HR, issues of accreditation, and federal reporting. So, as council is suggesting that if we do away with administrators, that teachers are now gonna have to perform these tasks. Teachers don't have enough time in their days to complete federal funding and accreditation reports on top of what they're doing in the classroom. The LCS budget is complicated, and there are reasons professionals such as Superintendent Edwards are in charge. I urge city council to honor her request and keep our schools safe and equitable for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now Jennifer Williams, followed by Consuela Mosley, and then Andrea Hurt.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Jennifer Williams, I'm a resident of Lynchburg. I'm here to ask yet again that you accept the reduced property tax rate of $1.05. This provides tax relief to property owners while also allowing city and LCS employees to be paid what they are worth and keep the services we all enjoy and depend on. It's a win-win for everyone. I've heard many of you claim that you want the 89 cent rate in order to relieve the great suffering of your most vulnerable constituents. However, this rate does nothing to help over the 50% of Lynchburg residents who rent their homes. It may marginally help people on fixed incomes or lower-income residents who own their homes, but the proposed increase in water and sewer rates will eat those savings up. If you really cared about your vulnerable constituents, you would have passed along information about the city's property tax relief programs for seniors and disabled veterans. I have not seen one social media post from you, nor have I seen one interview in which you mentioned this. You have had financial and budget professionals tell you the rate that would allow for property tax relief while still allowing the city to keep growing and being a place where people want to be. You have had educational professionals tell you that the 1550 plan is critical for LCS to be able to live up to its mission of every child by name and need to graduation and beyond. Your disregard of recommendations and advice by highly qualified people is baffling to me. When I have work that needs to be done on my home, I do my research and I hire the best professional contractor I can find. I trust that their advice is accurate and in the best interest of keeping my home safe and livable. What I do not do is hire a professional contractor and then decide that I know better than them simply because I do not like what they are telling me or because I watched a YouTube video and now think I can save money by doing the work myself. Trust the professionals that you have working for you. You have a real opportunity to serve the majority of Lynchburg residents by adopting the compromised property tax rate of $1.05, which will give property owners relief while also enabling the city to continue providing important services to renters and property owners alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Consuela Mosley, followed by Andrea Hurt and Robert Flood.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Consuela Mosley, I live in Lynchburg, I'm in Ward 2. I'm in support of the 101. I would like to express my concern of this tax budget. Who will be affected by this decision? Our children. Our children need assistance and requirements, whereas some children cannot concentrate in group settings and some need 101. We always say that it takes a village to raise our children. So, we need all the help possible in order to make our children succeed in life. Before I conclude, Councilmember Jeff Heckus, he always expressed on the reserve funds. But it seems like when it comes to our children, when we need their money, it's money on y'all mind instead of the children on y'all mind. So, I express that we need to make sure the money is not going to these... Teachers need more money, they in school, they're dealing with a lot. We don't know what these children face, what they leave home. I ask that y'all stop thinking of money and think of our children and make sure they succeed in life. They got 18 years to live, so make y'all best decision for our children and the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Hurt? No? Okay. Robert Flood, followed by Clay Williams and Williams Richards.
To the mayor, the vice mayor, and the members of city council. Every time I think about this little kid, 6 years old, that lost his life of senseless shooting. And we don't have a solution, but we know about all the problems. Anybody have a solution about what we need to do to stop this senseless shooting? Nobody. Over and over again. And we'll be talking about this again next 10 years. Because it don't happen again until we do something and stop talking about something. I am speaking as a concerned citizen again. And I'm not speaking for an organization other than the Rescuers of the Youth, that organization. We have had serious problems in Lynchburg, and no one has a solution. The summer hasn't even got here yet. The kids are dying in the streets, they're getting shot in the beds. Young kids. Now, city council members, you were voted in to make a difference. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, Independent. You was voted in to make a difference, whoever put you in regardless. Everybody got a heart. I don't know your heart, because I'm not God. But I know you was chosen to be here for a reason. And that's to help the people in Lynchburg. So, what would the city councilmen do? Because that last killing could have been one of your kids or one of somebody else's kids. I have a solution. And it's to put cameras everywhere, hot spot in Lynchburg, because the police know where all the hot spots are. Now, the hot spots might not stop somebody from doing something. But at least that it would deter someone less likely to do something by making them realize that it will have bad results. Now, I know that it costs money to put cameras up. But we want to cut money from different programs so that means that you might have a little money to put them up. Just think that little kid could have been one of y'all kids.
Thank you, Mr. Flood. Thank you so much. Clay Williams, followed by William Richards and Paul Key.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you for listening, if you are listening. Are you listening? Like, there's a lot of folks here who wonder if you're listening. You're listening to someone, a lot of you are. Someone told you to lower the real estate tax valuation to 89 cents. Someone told you that that was what was best for the city. Balancing the budget after you lower it? Either they didn't tell you or you didn't listen on that part, because you've been trying to do it since first of the year. Which makes me wonder, what else didn't they tell you? Did they tell you that cutting school funding would be unpopular with voters? That it might cost you in the next election? Whoever told you this? Did they tell you prioritizing tax cuts over kids could cost you your position on council? Did they tell you that part? Did they tell you that opposing a 1550 plan for teacher salaries, it makes you look like someone who doesn't value education? It makes you look like you don't care about educators? Did they tell you that? If they didn't, they really should have. Did they neglect to inform you that asking others to tighten their belts while dismissing out of hand any proposal that you donate or lower your salaries makes you look hypocritical in the least, heartless at most? Whomever you listened to when you started all this, they should have let you know that cutting real estate taxes is a little more complicated than it looks. And they definitely should have told you to listen to the city managers and financial officers before you jumped into the deep end, before you knew that there was water in the pool. Because the people of Lynchburg will remember what you did with this budget. They will remember how you prioritized campaign promises over our children and our teachers. And then, you'll have to listen to them. They'll speak loudly. They will, and with one voice. When that happens, you can go back to the people who told you 89 cents is the way to go, and you can ask them, "Well, what do we do now?" You could try, I guess, but you know what? They might not be listening to you anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Williams Richards, followed by Paul Key, and then... Williams is not in here. Paul Key, followed by Josh Pratt, and then Denise Scruggs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I want to start with what we last said. My brother, who passed away three years ago from cancer, said something to me that will stay with me the rest of my life. To piggyback on what we just said, people will remember how you made them feel long after they forget what you said. I don't want to appeal to your minds and your intelligence and all. I want to appeal to your heart to evaluate and to look deeply at what you have already received. I had the privilege of going to Kingston Campbell's service today. And I had the opportunity to participate in his committal. And some weeks ago, to be able to be at the young lady that died also and to minister scripture there. "Train up a child in the way that this should go, and when they're older, it will not depart." "There rose a generation that never knew Joseph for the work that he had done." It's important that, you know, you be open-minded, consider, and realize you represent a community at large. To not be such a hardliner that you're going to stay with a certain number no matter what. When I went to the city, I mean Lynchburg City School session earlier this afternoon, just to see how things were processing. And they were sharing, and this is public information, you can go back and look at it, the options that they had based on the decisions you might make. And I consider the fact that I had spinal meningitis when I was a child, and many of the conditions that would have killed me the next day purged out, but I had to have wraparound services. It got me to a place where I could be successful, earn a brick from the first school of Heritage High School as a graduate, and ultimately become an alumni of Liberty's University and see my family matriculate also. We cannot forget that. We cannot forget those things. I remember as an elementary school student being bused to Paul Monroe because they wanted to integrate schools. Yet, I was old enough to be a member of the All Dumb Bar reunion. Somehow, we gotta figure this thing out. Don't be so hardline that you just gotta stay with that number. Consider the fact that we do not have a death ceiling where we can make a decision. And there are monies that, by the way, that are already allocated for a number of things that simply need to be released. God bless you, my prayer is with you.
Thank you so much. All right, Josh, oh. Josh Pratt, please, followed by Denise Scruggs, and then Skipperhold.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Reverend Joshua Daniel Pratt. I'm the senior elder of action mission. I also serve as a pastor here in Lynchburg at All Nations Community Church. I am a resident of Ward 3. According to the Apostle Paul in the Book of Romans, Chapter 13, "It's the role of government to execute God's law with justice and with no partiality." Paul states, "Everyone must submit himself to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." He continues, "For rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong." "The judgment of right and wrong comes from God's law." These facts are well-established in the founding documents of our great nation and is recognized by the Supreme Court of the United States, "for it is, the Ten Commandments are carved in the stone above the court for the justices to see when giving their rulings." The doctrine of the lesser magistrate states, "When the superior, higher authority makes laws or decrees contrary to God's laws and decrees, then the lesser and lower-ranking civil authority has both the right and the duty to refuse obedience to the superior authority." In 1963, Bible and prayer were removed from government education. Since then, we've seen an increase in divorce rates, teen's pregnancy, minors' sex trafficking, a rise in domestic violence, murders, and many other social problems. For example, just 10 years later, in 1973, abortion was legalized, and genocide of Gen X, Gen Y, Gen C millenniums has led to over 63 million murders of the unborn. In June of 1999, US President Bill Clinton declared the anniversary of the Stonemall riots every June in America as Gay and Lesbian Pride Month. And, excuse me, in 2011, President Barack Obama expanded the official recognition of Pride Month to include the whole LGBT community that included transgender. Today, we see in our government schools hyper-sexualizing to the extent that gender confusion is being answered with puberty blockers and the accepting of mutilation of children's genitals. We've become a nation that celebrates sinful behavior and promotes systemic debauchery. This simply should not be. We are a Christian nation under God, and God abhors these things. According to the 2020 census data, 75% of American population identify as Christians. It's believed that Lynchburg is just over 85%. It would be safe to say that Lynchburg is a Christian community with a Christian government obligated to obey God's laws. At least six of you have pervest their Christian faith in Jesus Christ. You have the duty to interpose on behalf of Christians who resist the cultural slide into Sodom and Gomorrah. This past Sunday, Jonathan Falwell, the senior pastor of Thomas Road Baptist Church, stated, "There are six references in the Bible to the LGBTQ behavior." In fact, statements in Leviticus 1822, Leviticus 2013 regarding these acts are actually referred to as detestable or an abomination. There are at least two references in the Bible about transgender issued, Deuteronomy 22:5 and 1 Corinthians 11, "And God abhors that," end quote. "What adults do in privacy of their own homes is between them and God. It's not the role of government to proclaim and celebrate any type of sexuality or encourage its citizens to engage in such behavior, whether hetero or other. It is especially not the role of government to promote that which says, that God says is detestable, abominable, or abhorrent." How about this angle from a secular point of view? Do we recognize swinger month, pedophilia month, teenage marital sex month, heterosexual month? What about Christian month, follow Jesus month, give your life to Christ month? Is there not equity in our government? When will the police chief with the Christian, will take a posed picture with the Christian flag like he did with the pride flag? Are we not equal? Do we not have equity under the law? As Christians, and as a Christian community, we are to have compassion. Compassion is doing everything to help a person to avoid, to turn away from, and not be a part of a lifestyle that leads to death and... and not be a part of a lifestyle that leads to death and separation from God for eternity. Pastor Jonathan says, "As Christians, we're called to love, but do not affirm." It is not celebration of Pride Month, and affirmation is not the promotion of sexuality in government schools affirmation. As the lesser magistrate, it is your job to interpose on behalf of God's people, on behalf of God's law, to do what is right in God's eyes no matter what the state or federal government declares. Whether that be heterosexuality, homosexuality, bisexuality, or any other type of sexuality, it's not the role of government to support, fund, or promote in any fashion sexuality. It is not, therefore, I beseech you, on behalf of God and of His children, to not fund, or promote, or support in any way Pride Month or any type of sexuality or sexual celebration in government, including but not limited to public education, city departments, and external contractors.
Thank you. Denise Scruggs, followed by Skipperholt.
Hi, I'm Denise Scruggs. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Templeton Senior Center participants tonight. And I appreciate having the opportunity to speak. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for already re-looking at the closure of the Templeton Senior Center. I did have the opportunity to observe the last meeting that you had, and we certainly do appreciate it. We hope that you continue to support that thought throughout the arduous work of finalizing the city's budget. As you already know, the Templeton Center is a fantastic resource for older adults in this community. And that we know about one out of every four people in the city of Lynchburg are the age of fifty years and older. We also know that we're estimated that the population sixty-five and older is the fastest-growing population in America and in our state. We also know that most people now that are sixty-five are projected to live to the age of ninety. So we need to really start looking at these older citizens here. We also want to thank you also for allowing Templeton Center to continue to be a great place to retire. We have to have activities, programs, and opportunities to interact. And that is what the Templeton Senior Center allows us. It's a safe place to socialize, to learn, to meet other people, to grow, and then to engage. It's also a great place to keep good mental health practices, to prevent depression, and to reduce the impact of isolation and loneliness that many local city residents have after surviving the loss of a spouse or a partner and being left behind. The other thing that we know too, it's a great site for other activities and community services, such as the AARP Tax Relief Program that recently served over six hundred, approximately six hundred people this year. We also know that it's important that our older adults or fifty years and older have opportunities to participate in physical and cognitive health programs. We know that it lowers dementia risk. And we know that we don't have the services in the city to serve people, a large number of people with dementia. So keeping people healthy, giving them a good quality of life, helping them manage chronic health conditions through physical activities and other activities is so important. In conclusion, recreation, libraries, community engagement are all at the heart of the city's future, especially for our older citizens. And I thank you again for removing the Templeton Center and the adult programs for the library from the budget cuts. And I hope you continue to do so throughout the process. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, and our last speaker of the evening is Mr. Skipperholt. Skipperholt? He was added.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. Ms. Finney, as the City Manager, thank you all for letting me appeal before you. One of the things I learned a long time ago was that education is the key of poverty. And there are a lot of people in this city who fall into the poverty level and they need all the help they can get. There's a critical teacher shortage throughout the United States, a very critical situation. The Commonwealth of Virginia in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, there were ten thousand nine hundred vacancies. Seventy-two-hundred-and-eight of those were filled, leaving thirty-six-hundred-and-ninety-two unfilled teaching positions. You think any children suffered because of that? I'm sure they did. Here in Lynchburg, we have six hundred and eighty-seven teaching positions. This past year, ninety-seven new teachers were brought in, thirty-five... There were thirty-five unfilled vacancies. If you add those numbers up, we had a, a... A transition rate of nineteen-point-five percent, which is not good. That means if you take that number and you project it forward for five years, every five years, a teacher is departing. Interesting, when you look at the Lynchburg City Schools website, there's some very interesting information on there. And looking at that, I determined that Lynchburg, of the three counties surrounding us in Lynchburg, Lynchburg is number two in terms of teacher pay. Number one, by the way, is Amos County. If you all do not do something to substantially increase our teachers' pay, in my honest assessment, Lynchburg will end up being number four, not number two anymore. One of the things I don't understand has come before you all is the idea of funneling the funds to the school board differently than you have in the past. I don't know whether one of you all up on the stage here is an expert in school funding. If you aren't, shame on you. But in my opinion, the, that particular move is a vindictive move towards the city school board, and that is not a good thing. Lot of other things I could mention, but my time has run out and I don't want Ms. Finney to push that, that dead duck button anymore. Thank you all. Like I say, one of the things I hope you all do is please bear in mind that our teachers work with bright students, middle-of-the-road students, and poor students. The students that really need the help from the teachers are the minority students and the poor students.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Okay, our next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. We'll now move on to consideration of adopting an ordinance, adding a portion of enterprise drive as a new road designation to city code for the placement of maximum speed, speed limit sign, sorry, in certain residence districts and the fine for exceeding the maximum speed limit in posted residence districts. This council was previously briefed on this item during its April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three business item briefings. May I have a motion? Oh, oh.
Nope.
Sorry.
Y'all, I'm good.
Mr. Lee Newland. The floor is yours.
Yes, y'all saw this back about a month ago on April the eleventh. It's about enterprise drive speeding concern that Mr. Vice Mayor Faraldi brought to us. And we have an ordinance if you so desire to pass it. I can go through the information again if you'd like me to, or I'm, I'm good.
I think I was just so excited for Vice Mayor Faraldi that I just wanted to get to the vote because I know this was his, that's what, he's so impassioned about it. But Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Well, I know this is what everybody was here for tonight, this issue in particular. So thank you for sticking around for the enterprise drive discussion. It's been articulated, we've reviewed this. Folks at home, this has been a project of mine with the residents of Ward Four, specifically the Windhurst community. This comes to council with the support of the residency council at the summit and the... I believe it's just the Windhurst HOA is the name. So two residency groups that are in support of this. This does multiple things. It does overlay a minimum speeding fine of two hundred dollars, but it also beefs up signage in addition to some other awareness measures for drivers who are going over the speed limit. And I do want to thank city staff over the last year and a half, two years or so. Really, my full term on council, this has been a very large project. But working with, getting additional signage for crosswalks for seniors who are looking to cross, additional time for folks who are looking to cross the street and have the time to cross, and even working on landscaping to make sure folks can see around a corner. So this has been a very good project. This is the culmination of a traffic study that was implemented. So we do have data to back up what we're looking to do here. So with all that in mind, I do motion for approval.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not for me. Congressman Hugson?
Thank you. You know, as we looked at this, you know, I was at first somewhat reticent about it, but being a ward council member, I think it's very good to support the council member who's been in that ward, that has met with the neighbors, that understands the challenges, that has worked as hard as Councilmember Faraldi has with the citizens in that area for a long period of time. And I think that is, years ago, Joe Seifert said, hey, it's wise for the ward council members to support the other ward council member who is working hard in that ward. So glad to support it.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Contemptions?
I also really appreciate this, this project. I think it's, I think it's really going to make a difference. I've used to work in that area with the fire department and we had some nasty axes over there at times on enterprise drive. And I'll tell you what, people aren't going thirty-five miles an hour. So anything we can do to encourage people to obey those speed limits, especially in an area where you have so much pedestrian traffic, ranging from children to seniors, I think it's really important. And I'm very thankful that our Vice Mayor took this on and that he's following through and delivering for Windhurst.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I agree with everyone. I think this is great anyhow, we can be safer for our community members. That's a good thing. So let's go ahead and vote. Thank you, Mr. Newland. Great. Okay, we'll now move on to the first screening of the budget. This will be consideration of adopting an ordinance lowering the real estate tax rate from eighty-nine cents, to eighty-nine cents per hundred dollars. Yes?
So move? Seconds.
Okay.
And I will, I will speak to the eighty-nine cent if it's okay with council and those watching. I'll reserve the bulk of the eighty-nine cent comments with the preceding item, which would be the general fund.
Okay.
Just so I don't take up everybody's time.
Okay.
And I will speak to this one as it, as it stands. It is the eighty-nine cent rate. And with that, we've heard lots of things from citizens for the last few months. And so I just want to really kind of give some factual things. Lots of people have heard lots of misinformation, quite frankly. The assessments have gone up over twenty percent this year. So if we were to set the tax rate at ninety-two cents, that would be the same revenue to the city, same burden to the citizen. Okay? Keep in mind, I've been on council for a number of years and I've seen over the last two decades that about every time there's a reassessment, taxes go up. They've gone up so much over these last twenty years. In two thousand and four, when I was first elected, we did a citizen survey. Would it surveyed the citizens across the whole city? The number-one problem in two thousand and four was taxes are too high. We did that citizen survey again in two thousand and six. Taxes were too high. Eventually, we quit doing the citizen survey because, again, it was going to be taxes are too high. With that, once we've seen this reassessment, taxes would go up twenty percent unless we lowered the rate. With that being the case, we realized what happened just two years ago when council raised the taxes, five million dollars on our real estate property owners. Anybody remember what happened at the end of that fiscal year? Do you remember the surplus that you read about in the newspaper, the news in advance? The first year was a record surplus. The second year was a record, record surplus, about fifty million dollars, showing that that tax increase was completely and utterly not necessary. This right now, it lowers it, you know, I know people are, you know, thinking that the sky is falling because you heard certain items and whatnot. The reality of it is it lowers the real estate tax revenue, two and a quarter million dollars. The city has a general fund, which we will get to shortly, about two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars, which is fifteen million more than last year. It's a lot more money than last year, folks. With that, this council, who has finally heard from the citizens that said in every citizen survey, taxes are too high. We're going to do something about it. Yeah, it would have been great to do a lot more, but it's a good start. Keep in mind, our budget is going to be increasing because, do you think the city only gets taxes on real estate? Does anybody ever pay a water bill? Anybody ever pay a phone bill? Anybody pay an electric bill? Anybody ever got your car? Anybody ever go out to a restaurant? You go to a hotel, there's lodging tax, meals tax, ice cream tax. My goodness, there's taxes nine ways to Sunday. With all those increase in business license tax, tax on your gas bill, tax on your electric, tax on your phone, all of those revenues are actually increasing the revenue to the city about fifteen million dollars in this budget from last year. It's a lot of money extra. We've heard from lots of people today that said, oh, don't close the Templeton Center. Don't, you gotta be able to rake up our leaves and vacuum them up. Great, fine. We're still doing that because there is a record increase in this, in this budget. This budget that we're going to be looking at a little bit later, the general fund, is the largest general fund budget we've ever seen. And I talked to a few folks that were out there earlier today, said, hey, you may want to get some facts. Because I really care about facts. I've been here since nineteen eighty-five. Only one that's been here, well, I guess the two to my left have been here longer than me. We've been here a long time, we care about the city. I teach finance, I look at finance on every facet. I think this is a great start. This is a great first step, and this tax rate will do wonders. You know, what's happened, it's, it's been interesting as I've watched over the last twenty years. Do you know who applauds the most when we raise taxes on our citizens? Bedford County, Campbell County? Because they recognize that the growth is happening out there after we raise taxes. They want us to say, and we were elected to represent the taxpayers and the citizens that said, let's hold the line. Let's actually begin to think about how we can constrict and constrain those taxes rather than just raising them every chance we get. I'm so thankful that we have a majority that has understood this budget and understood the eighty-nine cents. I'm thankful for Vice Mayor Faraldi making the motion. And I hope this is unanimous vote, actually. I hope it's not just four, or five, or six, or seven. I hope it's all seven that unanimously say, we can do this because our next items on the budget are clear as a bell. This is a fantastic budget. And this, starting at eighty-nine cent, is going to start to say, fantastic. Let's invest in Lynchburg and let's grow the economy. So thank you.
Thank you. Congressman Madoula?
Thank you. Well, I will not be supporting this tax rate for all the reasons that I've stated since the infamous letter went to our city manager dated March twenty-first by the fore. I would like to add that we do live in a changing world. The post-COVID economy and looming recession is reshaping the way we live, work, shop, and move around. Communities such as ours that prepare for the future will prosper. Those who do not will decline. We all know that people and businesses can choose to live and work wherever they choose. Communities that do not, cannot differentiate themselves will have no longer a competitive advantage. Quite simply, this means that the quality of life now is more important than ever. Successful communities know that their future has to be intentional and not by chance. This tax rate leaves a lot to chance. It strips our city of the ability to set ourselves apart, the ability to attract businesses, the ability to attract and retain talent, the ability to shore up our education system, and the ability to attract tourism. As former council member Randy Nelson stated in a recent email, Lynchburg is fortunate to have one of the most experienced and highly-qualified city managers in Virginia. And he further states that our department heads and employees have been recognized as among the best in America in an effort to encourage us to not bypass and disregard their expertise and insights as we formulate a reliable and accurate tax rate. Those of you sitting here who claim him as your mentor really ought to listen more carefully to his words. We do have in place a city manager who has the wisdom, the desire, the vision to move the city forward in a positive direction intentionally. Let's not tie his hands by implementing this drastic tax cut. Given that, I would like to make a substitute motion to adopt the ordinance as is. Given that, I would like to make a substitute motion to adopt the ordinance as is, but to change the tax rate from eighty-nine cents to ninety-nine cents.
Second.
I'm second the motion.
Okay. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes. I'd like to reiterate everything that Councilman Doolan has said and also looking at over the past 20 years, looking at the growth of our city. I haven't seen people flooding out of Lynchburg. I've seen people flooding to Lynchburg. So we went from 60,000 to over 80,000 people. So I've seen, I've seen an increase in our community. We're thankful that we have Liberty University and all the great things that they've done as well as University of Lynchburg. Our purses are coming because of the great lifestyle we have in our community. Over the past 20 years, I have seen a downtown that was pretty much dying now is thriving. I've seen million-dollar loss that you would have thought you would see a million-dollar loss in downtown Lynchburg. We've seen all the many developments and investments that have been made in our community. It's because we had a city council that's before thinking was a 2020 plan, now 2040 plan that had been forethinking about how do we see Lynchburg 20 years from now? They made investments. So because of those investments, our community is thriving. I'm so thankful for listening to our city manager and our finance team that have, that have been award-winning team that have made projections, looking at the bond rating, make sure we're a substantially financially secure city, and make all those strong investments. And a lot of those extra funds from prior year came from some COVID funds and some other unexpected revenue. So we're looking at that as well. So I'm thankful to support our, the original idea from our city manager who has made, who presented a powerful budget to us with some tax savings and also some investments for some infrastructure and various other programs. Because we want to see for the next 20 years, we want to see our city continue to grow. We want to see our city continue to explore and make sure we have the right schools in place, make sure the businesses are thriving as well, and make sure our citizens have a good quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
If I may, just a few observations. It's a very brave motion because that equates to a seven or eight million dollar tax hike on Lynchburg citizens. And I'd hope that the residents of Ward One and Ward Two remember that next year because that's fundamentally the motion at hand, is to a seven to eight million dollar tax hike in this economy. It's a last-minute motion, so I don't even know why those who have presented it waited till now when we've had every single meeting since March, every single Tuesday we have met. And there hasn't been an alternative rate offered outside of a dollar five from the manager. And by my recollection, unless it was the meeting I missed for, for my honeymoon, I'll admit. But candidly, I, I hope folks remember that this is a seven to eight million dollar question that I truly hope the residents of Rivermont, Downtown, White Rock, Boonesboro, Lakeside remember, is this the kind of representation you want on council? And so I look forward to rejecting this motion and taking up the original at hand. And I do recognize that Councilmember Higginson has had a point of order he did want to reference.
Thank you. You know, with that, we did have a public hearing. We actually voted that night on the eighty-nine cent tax rate. If we want to have a motion that, as Vice Mayor Faraldi said, raises taxes by seven and a half, eight million dollars, guess what that requires? Another public hearing. So if you guys want to sit through another public hearing, we've heard from our citizens, we voted on the eighty-nine cent tax rate after the public hearing was concluded. It would require starting all over. I recognize some people would like that, but that motion is out of order because of the fact that it would require an entire new public hearing, advertisements, and all that, so.
To that, I don't know if it's out of order because of how it was originally marketed at a dollar five, if memory serves. So technically, it may not be out of order, but...
But I think we, I think what we did is we voted on the eighty-nine cent rate that, that, after the public hearing.
Yep, just trying to be helpful.
What I would offer council is, because council had represented essentially that the tax rate would be at eighty-nine cents as a group, you know, that in my mind had overruled the original notice for what was put in the newspaper. So certainly, I don't think the substitute motion is out of order. It can still be considered and taken up by council, but it would rather be similar to what the motion was originally on the eighty-nine cents direction. And what, if it was adopted, replaced the main motion and adopted after that, what city staff would need to do is do another public hearing, as Councilmember Higginson has said, and adopt the ordinance as revised.
Councilman Doolan, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to say I did have the city manager at one of our meetings very recently prepare what a ninety-nine cent rate would do. And one of the things it did would help put the money back into the schools, which is what I was trying to do.
I realize that, but there was no outright, this is where we should go. It was more of a request. And if that's the logic...
I can make this motion anytime. I don't know why you are making it look like I'm out of order.
I, I know you can't.
This is perfectly reasonable.
I'm not saying yours is out of order.
And I hope these citizens, three, four, or five years from today, when our city is like this, remember who voted in the eighty-nine cents. We're not talking about just today, this year. We're talking about subsequent years.
All right, well, I, I, I'll remind my colleagues, I value grandstanding and showboating when it's presented like everybody else. But ultimately, folks, I was trying to be helpful in saying it was not out of order. We're going to vote on this. It's going to be rejected 5-2 and we're going to adopt eighty-nine cents. If the logic is that a request for ninety-nine cents is what you've offered, so was what the four of us offered through a memo. So let's just call balls and strikes. I would ask council, let's just vote on this, get this thing through. If we have further comments, associate them with the general fund because that's the bulk of what we're doing. That's my plan.
Council missions?
This is dated April 6th, 2023, from the city attorney to all of us. However, because the city council formally acted on Tuesday, earlier Wednesday morning, by voting to lower the real estate property tax rate to eighty-nine cents and directed myself and the city manager to bring back the appropriate paperwork at a later date to accomplish same, this, in my opinion, overrides the original notice and purpose for the public hearing. Meaning, if for some reason the city council needed to raise the real estate property tax rate above eighty-nine cents during this budget process or later, then that proposed increase must be advertised in another public hearing held before the city council in accordance with the appropriate Virginia laws. So with that being said, I would agree that this motion is out of order unless, you know, you disagree with the city attorney.
Well, the issue is not the motion being out of order. It's been brought up in the same fashion as the eighty-nine cents was.
Okay, so let's just go ahead and vote on the substitute motion. We're voting to, to vote to support the substitute motion.
And what was the substitute motion rate again?
To...
Ninety-nine cents.
So if you're voting to support that motion.
Motion passes 2-5.
Okay, so now we'll go back to the original motion, which was to adopt the ordinance lowering the rate to eighty-nine cents per 100. Was there any additional discussion on that? I would like to make a comment. So there's a phrase we use called picking your battles. And I hope that many of the citizens who've watched this process have seen that I'm a fighter and that I've taken it very seriously when I've said that I really do believe that I represent all 82,000 people in this city and I do value your voices. And I've tried to listen and I've tried to follow the process since this all started. The night of our public hearing, I actually referenced the shooting of that 16-year-old. And I said, I bet the mom is not thinking about her real estate property rate right now of that young man. And I didn't say that because real estate tax is not important to me, because it is. And I did run on lowering the real estate rate and I want to honor that. And a lot of people that night specifically called me a liar because they thought I was going to not honor that campaign promise of mine. And that wasn't the intent at all. I just wanted to make sure that every citizen had a right to be heard the proper way before we made a decision. As you know, I wasn't involved in the original discussion of the eighty-nine cents. Is that where I would have gone? Probably not. I would have still supported a lower rate that would have given relief. I don't know where that would have been because that wasn't a discussion I was included in. However, that is where we arrived. As far as picking my battles, today Kingston Campbell was buried and we started our night off praying for him. And the night of our public hearing, I said that, I've told you since I got into office and even when I campaigned, that I ran on public safety and I said, if our city is not safe, nothing else matters. And I still believe that. So that is the battle that remains my number one focus because he wasn't safe. And his mother had to bury him today. So I have to pick my battle right now and it is still going to be the safety of our city. That has to be my priority because it can't happen again. Earlier today, I talked to the media and I told them that I was working on something called the Take Back Our Streets Community Coalition. Well, we'd be working with local faith-based leaders and the law enforcement community to try to get our hands around this situation and try to come together as a community to make sure we can put an end, or try to put an end to some of these violent acts that we're seeing in our streets, try to get on top of these things and help our youth, give them things to do so they're not getting involved in criminal activity. We can try to make things a little bit safer around the city because we've got to put an end to it. So I'm telling you all this because the real estate rate is important to me. And I know there are a lot of people that, that want relief and need relief and I've heard you and I respect that. But all this to say, I want all the citizens to know that the safety of our city really is where I'm, I'm thinking, where I'm focusing on, where my heart is tonight. It's hard for me to think about anything else right now because many of you know that I've said this whole time, that I have a mother's heart and I'm devastated, truly devastated. So with that said, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Eighty-nine cent.
For eighty-nine cents.
The motion passes 5-2.
We will now move on to consideration of adopting an ordinance increasing the water, sewer, and storm water rates.
Before we do that, I'm hopeful that we, you know, some of these rates, I know Mr. Mitchell had said that some of the items we have to raise because of meeting household income with our, our rate categories. But the one thing that we can do, and I think it would be prudent for us to, if we're raising it by four or five bucks, that we lower, as you see on your, your sheet, one of the items that outlines the account charge, $3.69, or eliminate the $4 fee per equivalent meter. You know, there's lots of people that use very little water and a flat fixed rate, you know, when we're raising it by $5.69. If we can give a little relief by removing either the account, probably move, remove the monthly account charge, $3.69, vote to, to increase the volume rate, but lower the $3.69 rate, I hope we can either do that today or actually, if we want to table that to another time. But if we want to do it now, I would hope that we can lower that because you hate to increase, you know, one side and take from another. And so we're lowering the trash fee fortunately tonight, but when we're raising the water bill on average five, six bucks, it'd be nice if we were able to lower an account charge.
Do you want to address that to Mr. Benda or Mr. Rendell? Do you want to speak to that?
I'd ask Dr., Dr., I mean, Dr. Dinn, Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick. Councilman Higginson and I had talked about this. We've talked through ways in which to, to look at the water rates and conversed with Mr. Mitchell about kind of the opportunities that you had discussed, concluded that, well, let me give it to you so that you can...
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. The, there's, there's three fees that we're discussing here, water, storm water, and sewer. The sewer rate is subject to the, the...
CSO.
The CSO consent decree. So we have very little flexibility around where we set that rate. On the water and sewer side and with the account fee and the, and the, it's not a tap fee, I'm using the wrong language here. Those revenues, all of them, both the, the, the volume fee and the account fees are needed to support the level of investment, both in the capital plan and in the operating budget for the water and the, and the, and the storm water budgets. So if we were to remove that fee, we would probably have to pull the budgets for the other funds off the agenda tonight and, and come back with amended budgets that reflect a lower level of investment in the, yeah, in, in the funds. So certainly something we can do, but we would need to, to pull those and take a look at the, the overall impact and what that would mean for the, for the investment in those funds.
My recommendation would be for council to consider this tonight, act on it tonight. And then if there's a desire to look into this over the next two weeks, that would afford us a time to consider it again for the second reading. And I think that would be kosher.
So what is the, what is the account charge now?
Seven dollars and 69 cents, $3.69 for the account fee and $4 for the, for the tap fee or...
Yeah. And in order to keep us on schedule, my recommendation is to consider this tonight. And then if, if there's a will of the body to tweak it further, we would have those two weeks to consider that and all at the same time, keeping us on schedule.
Keep in mind that if we lower the fee and then we vote on the budget for the other funds, we are out of balance. So you're, you're, you're voting on a budget for the other funds, for the water, sewer, stormwater fund, that the rate doesn't support. So what, what we don't know is exactly what we would have to change in those budgets in order to bring them in line with the new level of revenue.
Okay, so, okay, Dr. Wilder.
I move for approval of that as, and then during the next budget, we can work on that again next year. We've made a lot of changes to our budget just last minute. So I'm making a motion, we go ahead and approve this, that particular line item as it is. Thank you.
One second? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Oh. Just so Councilmember Doolan knows, the motion was to approve the sewer rates as is.
The motion is to approve the sewer rates as is. Yeah, okay.
So with that increase, without having an offset, I'm going to be voting against this one because I think there's an opportunity there, so.
All right, let's go ahead and vote, please. Okay. Moving on, consideration of adopting an ordinance prohibiting charging certain trash collection fees in the city for fiscal year 2024. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
I guess just if you want to share what this is, I think so, I'll, I'll share. I mean, it's a good thing. You know, at the beginning of this year, Vice Mayor Faraldi talked about, that council has talked about with, especially with the surplus last year, the $50 million surplus, talked about ways that we can actually provide relief to our citizens. And this is a fantastic one. It's waiving the $10 trash fee on our citizens. You know, we, we heard about some folks saying, oh, this can be kind of the end of the world. Let me just tell you, next year, people are going to go, wow, you made government a little more efficient. You actually cared about the people paying the bill. You cared about our real estate taxes. You're caring about the fact of our trash pickup. You know, this trash pickup fee, I've, I've been here for a long time and I've watched what's happened with all this little micromanaging of adding fees and trash tags. The city got more dirty. Got trash is sitting out that wasn't picked up because people said, oh, I've got to have a 95-cent bag to pick it up, or I've got to pay this and I've got to pay that. And trash would be piled up and the city got more dirty. I, I'm thankful that we can actually waive this fee for this year and for, I think, next year as well for our citizens and we can actually pick up the trash because making a city good... Because making a city good and better and more vibrant is, is doing some of the things we've talked about earlier, but it's also making sure that we keep our city clean. And picking up the trash that everybody has is a great start. And I'm glad we can do it more efficiently and more economically. So thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes. Yes, I want to thank the city manager for bringing certain cost savings to our citizens as far as tax relief and other items he brought to us in his initial budget. So I appreciate the city manager for listening to, the city council members and following that. Also, I want to thank you for the, also thank for the city team, the trash collectors. You know, we went back and forth over the past couple of years and finding the best method, the best cost savings, how to do with the trash tags, whether it's the seals on the trash cans, whether they let fat feed. So that has been going on for several years and trying to find the best method. So I appreciate the city team and working diligently and finding the best method in trash pickup and bulk collection in those particular months and periods of time period you had the bulk collection. So they have been working diligently and making sure the citizens are satisfied with the trash collection. So I really appreciate their hard work and their efforts. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes seven-zero.
All right. Consideration of adopting an ordinance prohibiting charging motor vehicle license fees for the fiscal year 2024. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
There was a tie on the second. Who wants to claim it? Dr. Wilder?
I, it's another great opportunity to reduce the burden on our citizens and I'm glad we're able to get this done.
One?
Yes, again, like, like last year, we noticed how the vehicle prices had gone up again. So we reduced our taxes for that particular period. So we appreciate that, the savings for our citizens. Thank you.
I agree.
I guess just for clarification, though, this isn't the ninety percent assessment value. This is the license fees that are being waived for the first year, which is another great thing.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes seven-zero.
Okay. Moving on, consideration of adopting an ordinance lowering the business license tax rates effective January first, 2024. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, with this one, I think this one is very fantastic. Somebody spoke earlier today, said the best way out of poverty, you know, we've discovered three things that have been for a long period of time. You finish high school, you get a job, and you don't have kids until you're married. Somebody spoke earlier about making sure our students in Lynchburg finish high school. Another one is making sure they have a job. We have businesses that have a business license tax that is taxed on their gross receipts. So let's say a business generates gross receipts of two million bucks and they have two and a half million dollars of expenses. Normal people would say, you don't pay taxes because you had a half a million dollar loss. Nope, not with this one. The gross receipts tax is on the gross. So I'm very thankful that council has taken good action over the last year or so that we've lowered the business license for small businesses. We're now lowering the business license tax for larger businesses, hoping that they'll stay in Lynchburg, come to Lynchburg, grow in Lynchburg, thrive in Lynchburg, and hire in Lynchburg. And help folks out of poverty through a job. I think that's, economic development is a fantastic way to help improve our citizens' lives.
Thank you, Councilmember Rouse. Quite frankly, you know, one of the things that you'll hear some of us say from time to time is, you know, all taxes are bad, but some are worse than others. And the example that he just gave about the gross receipts tax shows that this is one of those taxes that is really a lot worse than others. We want to drive business into the city. That increases revenue, that increases economic development. That's what we want to do. And this tax is a barrier for businesses coming into the city. Quite frankly, city manager, sharpen your pencil, I'd love to see this tax go away in next year's budget. That's where I stand on it. So I'm really excited to provide this relief to our businesses. And just one other point that I want to make is how disappointed that I have been in the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. Because they were pushing so hard for their own hundred thousand dollars from the city of Lynchburg, but at never at any point did they advocate to lower the business license taxes on the businesses in our city. And that just seems so counterintuitive to me for a regional business alliance. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm glad that we have people here on council that see what is important for our businesses and that we're willing to do what it takes to provide them relief.
Who else? Okay, let's go ahead and vote, please.
The motion passes seven-zero.
Okay. Going on to consideration of introducing a resolution appropriating the fiscal year 2024 general fund operating budget excluding discretionary external service providers and school operating budget. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
All right, so forgive me, folks, but I tried to isolate my comments to be on one or two items and then just leave it there, so forgive me. So I think this is arguably one of the biggest things that will be considered tonight, if not the biggest. It's the operations of government. And when there was a change in, in management, so to speak, with council in November, there were certain expectations for us coming in. Cut taxes, historic investment in public safety, and prioritize the classroom. And while this doesn't specifically touch the educational piece that's going to be coming up, I, I wanted to kind of bring this full picture. And really, this budget does that. You know, there, there's been a lot of things said tonight. I, to folks who said, you know, I'm not sure if you are listening, you should see the notes that I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm listening. I, I hear what folks are saying. I may not agree, but I do have to say, with the folks who are outside this week, previous week, to which I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't here, but my now wife would have killed me if I left the honeymoon halfway. Folks, thank you for conducting a truly patriotic, civil engagement, even though I might be on a different side of the issues. I, I think we as a community need to recognize that, even though we're on maybe different sides of the aisle, if you will. So there, there are a lot of things here, though, I do want to highlight. Yes, the Templeton Center, it's in there. I want to clarify that. This is not a net reduction in funds to Lynchburg City Schools. I want to be very, very clear on that. We are targeting the classroom because in my humble opinion, we're due, this council has appointed similar people over the course of the last twenty years to the Lynchburg City School Board, and we've seen the same type of results, which are not increase in pay, continued decline in enrollment, not necessarily from COVID, but candidly, maybe because of the quality of education that we're offering. We've seen years after years after years after years of failed councils to increase compensation for folks. Thankfully, as the, the last couple of years, there have been some, and this council is continuing that trend with a five percent general wage increase. I know a lot of businesses aren't doing that right now, but in order to maintain what we're doing, we need to have a competent workforce and the core responsibilities of government necessitate that. And I want to commend city manager for advocating for his workforce in that regard. The, there's historic, when I say historic, I mean like unprecedented investment in public safety in this budget. I mean, I don't think it's ever been at this level in the city of Lynchburg nor central Virginia. More officers, I don't know the last budget where more officers have been added. Civilian positions to complement those officers, addressing retention pay for firefighters, adding a new fire station, I mean, increasing pay for nine-one-one dispatchers, and the list goes on for just nine, for, for law and order, for public safety, for EMS in the city, and that is commendable. And then finally, for education, we are prioritizing the classroom. We are trying something new. It does take courage to try something new. I know folks disagree with part, you know, funding by category, but it's this council saying, we're taking this bull by the horns and we're going to try to wrestle with it. And I fully expect, which whoever's appointed to the school board will say, hey, if we need to tweak something, we're going to go back to council and say, we need to pull these monies and move these around, and here's why. And it's on us to work through that process. And that candidly is how it works in the state government, it's how it works in the federal government. There's no reason why it can't work here. That's a very high overview of what we're doing. And I think it lines up with the three main things that last November was all about. Cutting taxes, historic investment in public safety, and prioritizing the classroom. And for me, yes, electing a school board, but that's, you know, I don't need to preach that and use my official capacity to go after that. And I know I'm about five minutes, but I am trying to keep it all on one comment. So, folks, I'm looking forward to supporting this. I, I believe all of us can vote for the general fund and I call on you to do it. And I do, again, want to thank all of you for this, this process and the staff for their work and my colleagues and the citizens who've been engaging with us throughout.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not going to, just lots of things that Vice Mayor said, which are so true. You know, again, we heard lots of things. Lots of times you hear things from the news or, you know, offense to news media, sometimes we hear things that are wrong. It's good to have facts. You know, I think everybody's going to leave today and go, wow, that's a great budget. How did you give the staff a five percent increase? How did you actually give more to the classroom in Lynchburg City Schools? How were you actually able to get a new fire station? How were you actually able to get more police officers on the street and give raises and actually address compression? How were you able to do that? Again, because it's record spending budget. Last year's budget, we're looking at right now for this general fund is two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million. Well, I guess we don't have anything on the screen today. Budgets cuts. Just kidding. Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million last year is two-hundred-and-twenty-three million. But what did we hear over the last few weeks or months? People said, oh, my goodness, this can be the end of the city. Folks, we're doing it. And now this budget and going forward is a new day. We need to actually recognize that we need to actually, we've got lots of issues that we need to do. This should be, this was the easy budget. I think next year, when we start actually starting what we should have done several years ago, is a zero-based budget, where we actually say, hey, there's some things that we may be not to do, some things we've got to do a lot more of. Those are kind of things that need to be. We need to make sure every department is sharpening their pencil and saying, here are things that we need, here are things, actually, we don't. Here are things that the private sector could do a lot better than us. Here are some things that we need to actually double down on. Fantastic. That, that's the whole purpose, and that's the purpose of budgets, is you actually go through, you, you can't go through everything. You can't just say everything is essential. You prioritize. This budget prioritized what? Council that was elected on, the citizens spoke vociferously about, and we're able to deliver it. And I do hope it's a seven-no vote on this general fund.
No one else? Councilman Hagelson? I mean, sorry, missions?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars. How many of you ever spent that amount of money before? Yeah, I haven't, okay? And, and out of that two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million, like, maybe that much of it came from me. The rest of it came from everybody else. Right? And that's how I think when I cast this vote on this budget. Those aren't my dollars. Those are your dollars. And for everybody watching, and for everybody that's not paying attention, and for all my former coworkers at the Lynchburg Fire Department that aren't watching and don't care, but they are so stoked because I've talked to so many of them about getting these pay increases. Right? City employees used to be one of them. You know what they care about, about tonight, about this meeting? They don't care about anything else but the five percent wage increase. Right? Five percent's a big deal if you're a city employee. I'm so happy that we're able to value our city employees like that, and I do thank our city manager for just relentlessly advocating for them. Because it's important. Our city employees need to be taken care of. There were many years where it didn't happen, didn't happen at all. So, so that's how I view this. I'm, I'm just super pleased about the great things we're going to be able to do. There's no reductions in services. The sky is not falling and everything is going to carry on. But I do have one question for our city staff. Does the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance provide any contractual services to us?
Not that I'm aware of. It's a membership. Whether or not it's contractual services between now and the twenty-third, I can check with Marjette to make sure of that. But I believe it's a, it's a, it's a membership fee based on population and some other different things that are per cap.
What I would kind of potentially offer, this is a substitute motion, would be to divide that hundred thousand dollar contribution to the LRBA from this question and vote for the rest of the general fund minus the LRBA contribution because that may potentially require a super majority if it's not a contractual service. I just asked the city attorney about that. So we need to find that out because if we didn't get the super majority vote for the LRBA funding, we want to make sure we're compliant with the Code of Virginia on that.
So what, what I would submit, and I guess I use the term contractual service loosely in the advice. So the thing is, if we're paying for something from them, it wouldn't necessarily fall on the, in my mind, under a donation as it would. Okay. So it's my understanding then that a super majority would not be required if you're paying for a membership service of some sort.
Fair enough. That answers my question. So I withdraw that substitute motion. And I look forward to supporting this budget. And I know that you and your staff are going to go forward and carry great things for our citizens with the resources that we are taking from the taxpayers and giving to you guys.
Dr. Wilder?
I do not support the motion. Again, because I do not support that same tax rate. Again, if, if you look over the past twenty years, we have seen our city grow over twenty thousand people because of the investments that have been made in our community. The investments have attracted more persons to our community, and that's why we have grown so. So because of investment in infrastructure, investment in parks, investments in the downtown landscape and all the other things we, we've seen the blessings of. So that's why we have increased over the past twenty years. We've seen the investments in our downtown area. That's why the population has increased. So we continue to see investments by prior city councils and the, the ideas of what looked like twenty-twenty or forty, twenty-forty plan. So I, so I do not support the current motion. And also, staff members, they do want to five percent. I think more than anything else, people want to be valued. People want to be appreciated. People want to be talked to properly. So again, staff, we want to let you know, we appreciate you and we value you. I value the initial projection and estimates and the ideas from a city manager and their team. I value that and I appreciate that. And I think we all need to treat you with respect and treat you with kindness, more than a higher wage. They want to feel valued and they want to feel appreciated. Thank you for your service.
I'm sorry, Faraldi?
There are two things that I want to highlight. Something that's, when I was growing up, my, my parents always told me I needed to grow thicker skin. And when I first got elected, I, I think that still is applied. I think in some situations, that's still very true today. There was one comment made tonight, and I wish that person was still here, that this council is responsible for the three children that were taken from us. And when that comment was made, it, it struck me. Because by that logic, last year's council, or two years ago, I should say, 2021, that council is, by that logic, just as responsible for the most deadly year in the city's history. Folks, that's the track we're on. That headline from SET, when I got back, broke my heart. Three shootings, I think it was three months and three blocks. I would humbly ask all of this council, all seven of us, I know we disagree on the rate, but on the expenditures, on the things we're doing in this budget, folks, we are directly saying, we're investing in public safety. Councilmember Wilder, I know we've had our disagreements, publicly so. From the bottom of my heart, for the district you represent, I would ask for you to reconsider. Because those, that headline is in the heart of Ward Two. And we're looking to make strategic investment with those dollars coming from the city to invest in police and fire. And I know the mayor and I have already met with the city manager, had a wonderful meeting, going over what other services in addition to law enforcement can we do to, to really get a grip behind what's going on in our city. The second point, you know, I, I want to challenge those who are here tonight and who have kind of... The second point, you know, I wanna challenge those who are here tonight and who have contacted me, saying, I'm very eager to pay my fair share. I'm very eager to offer what I believe is right. Essentially, I wanna be taxed more. I wanna, I wanna see the services move forward. So, I have a challenge to everyone who has spoken here tonight, and I'll work with you on it. If you wanna pay more, in the line on the check, just write Lynchburg City, and in the memo, put the department you want it to go to. I'll personally ensure, everyone who's spoken here tonight in the last month and a half, that those dollars go to that department and to that service you wanna see happen. And I look forward to working with our chief financial officer, our city manager, to go back on all the names who have spoken, who I have taken copious notes, and seeing your check deposited into the coffers of the city. Let's pass this budget.
Anyone else?
I'm in line with the 89 cent per hundred budget. We need to pass it. When asked by city manager, I told him 88 cent per hundred. You remember? So, you got a raise. You got a one-cent raise. I wanted it lower, and fear, when you're fear-driven, you don't think right. It causes you to think that the sky is falling when the sky is not actually falling. And we can make amendments. We get through this, it'll be a blessing, because the assessment was so high, the city is gonna make money. We're not going in the hole, and I wouldn't stand by and let my city go in the hole. I run a business. I know how to run a business. I know how to increase, and I know how to decrease. But we can get through this. We pass this budget and move forward. Stop all the crying, because it's good. It's good for the citizens. I ran the campaign on lower taxes. And like I said, with this, you got a one-cent increase, because I wanted 88 cent per hundred.
Dr. Wilder?
Do we need a public hearing for Larry's one second?
Just making a follow-up, a follow-up comment. I guess I was called out in reference to Ward 2 and supporting the budget because of the situation in Ward 2. I don't think we have enough time for me to make adequate comments, probably make a few comments. My record speaks for me. Over the 30 years of community service and dedicating to Ward 2, over the work we do at Jubilee and all the other 20-plus boards I serve in, my record speaks to me on what I do for Ward 2. So, if we wanna talk about that, I can do that, but I'm not gonna do it tonight. Reason why I can't support it, because there's so many other things I see the budget can do, the investments. You know, the problem is, we gotta realize, we wanna just lock people up. We wanna just hire more police officers. We wanna hire more sales, more of that, but we don't make the prevention investments. We don't do those type of things. So, we do that, we just have prisoner pipeline situation that go forward, and we're not trying to get into all the discussions, but just there's various reasons why I can't support this total budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. One last one.
Okay. I'll just make a couple of comments. I... Mr. Benda?
Yes, ma'am.
When you first presented the budget proposal in January, do you remember what I called myself that night?
Not exactly. I'm sorry.
I said I was gonna be your positive Patty.
Yes, I do remember that, yes.
And I said that because I applauded the public safety package that you brought forth. And I had said that to you because I had spent, at that time, probably six to eight months with our law enforcement community, doing my homework, researching their needs, and discussing the community needs that we had regarding public safety and crime, and really putting that together, and then sitting with you back in whatever our first meeting was, saying, hey, here's what the, you know, community's saying, here's our law enforcement community's saying, and I'm gonna ask this of you, and you delivered. And so, I appreciated that. And so, when we started discussing the budget, we had some miscommunications, and... But things got back, put back in, and so, I really appreciate that, and all the work that your staff has done. It seems like a million questions. I'm not sure how many it's been, but it's been a lot of questions that you guys have been asked in all the extra time. So, I wanted to take a second and say thank you very much to everyone who has worked countless hours, asked tons of questions, been patient in your answering of those questions and all of your presentations. I really, truly appreciate it, and just your professionalism, being under fire constantly with lots of things coming at you. So, from me, I wanna say thank you all very much for the late hours, especially, and your families for what they have sacrificed all these days and nights that you've done this. So, I wanna tell you that first, and then also for the public safety piece. So, that is my, again, as far as this budget, like I've said, that was really... My goal was to start with the public safety piece, and so, really, that was my passionate part of the budget. The rest of it, I can't say that I'm thrilled with all of it. I would have made some changes if I had had more in the conversation myself, but I'm gonna have to trust my peers here, and what they've said in their comments and in their discussions that we've all observed over the last, you know, month or so, I'm just gonna have to trust that what they're saying tonight is the case. And they've made it sound like we should be hopeful, and that the city's gonna go in a positive direction, and the revenue's gonna be there, and the schools are gonna do well, and they're gonna be supported. And so, I'm just gonna have to be trusting and hopeful that that's the case, because, like I said, there's other things our community's going through right now that I really need to focus my attention on, and that I think the city is looking at. So, I think there's things that I'm excited about, and I think y'all have done a great job, and we have a wonderful city and wonderful people, and we wanna keep moving in a positive direction. So, I'm excited to support the budget for that reason.
Councilman Helgeson?
Thank you. So, with that, with the thanks, I'd really like to thank four of my fellow councilmembers. Like to thank Vice Mayor Feraldi, Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Missions, who recognized early, at the beginning of this year, they recognized it last year when they campaigned, and two years ago when others campaigned, hearing from the citizens of what we must do. And what we did with this budget, you know, I appreciate city staff doing what the majority of council said, you know? It'd been great if they did it at the beginning, as opposed to the end, but I'm thankful that it happened, but I'm thankful for the leadership, because you four folks have heard from citizens that came up and said, oh, my goodness, the sky is gonna fall. But you looked at the quantitative aspects of this budget, you see the increase, you see all these things, you recognize that you weren't gonna fall prey to, you know, manipulation or tears or whatever, because you're looking at factual elements of how you make a city run. So, thank you for the courage. Thank you for standing up for our citizens, our businesses, our families, and thank you for taking the bull by the horns, and I'm thankful that you can approve this budget today. So, thank you all.
Missions?
Kind of echoing on what Councilmember Helgeson just said, I wanna offer that same thanks to you. You've been in here fighting in the trenches for, what is it, going on 19 years now? And there's probably nobody more knowledgeable inside this building about how the city budget works. So, I really appreciate you for that and what you've done. And then, one other thing that I wanna point out is, is I appreciate that our Attorney General, after being provided with the facts, gave this budget two thumbs up, after he got the right information. So, I appreciate that he was able to give this budget two thumbs up.
Anyone else? All right, let's vote.
All right, moving on. Consideration of introducing a resolution appropriating the fiscal year 2024 discretionary external service providers budget.
One I'd like to remove from that.
I propose to divide the question on all of these individually.
So, is that a...
You just divide the question. Yeah. You vote on each, so you have five votes, or four votes.
Okay. Break me in...
I'll just give everybody a chance. I would just give everybody a chance to pull it up, so that...
I can't get it.
There you go. Just right here. Item G for those who are keeping score at home.
So, it's $460 to Amazement Square Signal and Rail Car, $15,000 to the Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, $1,931 to the Central Virginia Community College Board, or College Board, and then $13,160 to the Virginia Legal Aid Society.
So, Madam Mayor, if council's amenable to do it this way, which I certainly am, I would motion for item number one, which would be $460 to Amazement Square.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay. Vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Moving on to Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, $15,000.
Unless anyone else would like to take the motion, I'm happy to make the motion for $15,000.
Second.
Any discussion? No?
Should we clear the board first, so we can do vote?
Just writing it all down.
There you go.
All right. Ready to vote for this one? Okay.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unless anyone else, $1,931 to CVCC Board. So, moved.
Second.
Go ahead and vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay.
And then, the last one would be $13,160 to the Virginia Legal Aid Society.
I'd like to give motion.
Second.
Okay.
This one, I'll be voting against, and it does require a supermajority, since it's a donation to legal aid. There's been several things that have happened over the years. One thing, one notable thing was terrible. Several years ago, when we made a donation, and they turned around and sued our police officers, they sued the city because of a, they said, a improper impounding of a 2008 Honda Accord. Then, they sued the city, not to get the car out of impound. They sued the city on a constitutional speech issue, and giving people money, law firms that sued the city, I don't think it's a prudent use of tax dollars. So, I'll be voting against those, and I hope we have a majority that votes against this.
Dr. Wilder?
I just, I found that... I'm trying to find the right words. I find that so, for us to not fund an organization that's serving our poor, and I think we've talked about that situation, for organizations serving our poor, and not to give them funds that serve, I think, for housing assistance and rental assistance and some various other things, I think it's so inappropriate for us not to support them, but then hold them blamed for suing the city when some of us ourselves are doing the same thing. That just, that just, I don't understand that. That's like, what do you call that? I don't wanna say we're hypocritical, but I don't understand that. That's not fair, to not support them, but support everything else. That's just, I don't think that's fair. I'm sorry.
Just, it is vastly different from anything. You know, when somebody doesn't pay their car payment, and then the actual company says, hey, you gotta either make the payment, or we're impounding the vehicle, and they go to impound the vehicle, and then, while the person is trying to impound the vehicle, the people are threatening the tow truck operator, to the point that he has to call the police to make sure that it's safe for him underneath the truck. And then, they sue the police for saying, hey, we wanna make sure this is safe. It's not just a matter of a suit. It's a matter of saying, you're going after somebody that didn't make a car payment, and now suing the city for six figures. You know, with money that we give them, this is a voluntary donation, and as Councilmember Missions said earlier, this money comes from our citizens by force. We set tax rates. We take money. And now, if we're gonna give that to people that are gonna sue our city police officers, and it's just, I don't understand how... I know you maybe not think that you think any suit is the same kind of thing. This is vastly different. This is rotten, giving money to an organization that used to do good things, and they even admitted after the fact that they wished they didn't do that, because they thought an attorney was trying to make a name for himself, doing a constitutional case over something as an impounded vehicle. So, anyway, we've talked about this. I've talked about this. I've seen this for years. I just, it does require a supermajority to give that money. I don't think it's a good use. I know that people can voluntarily donate their own money to different nonprofit organizations. It's not a good use for us to take money from citizens by force of law and then give it to our favorite charity, so.
Yeah, I just wanna say, Councilmember Helgeson, since I'm on council, I think that's the only incident that we have had. And if I remember the case right, it was some attorney that was out of Harrisonburg that was involved. It was not even a local person, so I'm just saying, I would not forever hold that against the organization.
So, we asked him to stop it, and they didn't.
I'm just gonna say that I don't feel comfortable voting on this without having further knowledge of that situation, because I do know that the Legal Aid Society does do some good things for people that are in need, and people can call me all kinds of names for this one. I don't even care. I just feel like I don't wanna be forced into a position to make a vote right now based on a case I was literally just notified on three seconds ago and withhold.
It's been, we've talked about it for probably three years on council.
Well, I haven't heard of it.
And Dr. Wilder?
Also, for our city council, we had a meeting with Legal Aid to discuss that, and to tell them our concerns about that. So, we have discussed that with them, and I thought everything was remedied about that several, like, years, whatever that happened a couple of years ago.
If you didn't, you could abstain, which is a possibility, unfamiliar with the issue. Well, we could ask her to abstain. I mean, can't she ask for approval to abstain?
She can't.
Whatever.
I just think, I just know that there are people in our community who rely on the Legal Aid Society, because they truly need their assistance, and I think if there's one circumstance where they messed up, that we don't hold that against them. If it was repeated problems, then I could see it, but I just feel like there's people that can't afford legal help in the city, and I would hate to take that from them and hold it against them because of one situation. That's just where I'm standing right now. Mr. Taylor?
I have to support it too, because I send people to Legal Aid all the time. I do meet people on the street, they say, well, I need some help, you know? And I say, well, go downtown, go to Legal Aid, and I'll be forced to support it, you know? Everybody make mistakes, and we gotta be in the forgiving business too. So, I have to support this.
Okay, so, we will motion to... Oh, sorry.
No, that's what... Sorry, I was just pointing, because it was his motion.
Your motion was to support?
Yes.
Okay, so, we will be voting, if you vote, you're voting to support giving the donation.
The motion passes 5-2.
Okay, we'll move on to consideration of introducing a resolution appropriating the fiscal year 2024 operating fund budgets for all other funds. May I have a motion?
So, move.
Okay, second? Okay, any discussion?
For those keeping score at home, this is just a lot of the other funds that we have, airport, enterprise funds, and...
Looks good to me.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote on this one? Let's go.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Consideration of introducing a resolution appropriating the fiscal year 2024 schools' operating budget by major classification. May I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
First, I'm gonna go ahead and do my disclaimer, that, you know, we're appropriating the FY '24 Lynchburg City Schools operating budget, and that I also need to disclose that my wife is a educator in Lynchburg City Schools. She's a teacher, and that I'm choosing to participate in this transaction, this matter, under the authority in the Code of Virginia, and that while my wife is an educator in the school system, she's part of a large group of educators in the city school system, and this affects the entire group at large, as well as all of our wonderful students in the school system, and that I am able to participate and vote on this fairly objectively and in the public interest. So... I had about forty hours into figuring out the categorical funding into Lynchburg City Schools. It was quite a bit of work. And then I was able to get some highlights today from the Finance Committee meeting. And what do you know? The sky's not falling at Lynchburg City Schools with the categorical funding that was proposed. Matter of fact, I'm looking at some of their own documents and board docs, right? So the proposed total school expenditures are one hundred and nine point three million. Now, there's some people up here that like to be stuck to this number about how much the city contributes, right? Well, we got to look at the total dollars going into the school system. And anything that says we are cutting the school budget is a complete, total, false, and utter lie. And I expect to hear it from that end of the dais before this conversation is over. We are not cutting a dollar to Lynchburg City Schools. Because last year's proposed budget, again, I'm looking at board docs, their information, one hundred and five point nine million. That's a three point four million dollar increase in the total operating fund for Lynchburg City Schools. Now, I don't know how you feel about it, but I have a serious problem with our taxpayer funds supporting political organizing and political activity, which is essentially what Lynchburg City Schools did, releasing a press release last week saying that the budget's been cut. It's a, it's false, it's a lie, okay? And by the end of the night, I'll probably be proposing an investigation into the leadership in the school division. Another thing that tells me what we're doing is the right thing to do and why the school division is full of nothing but propaganda. You know, sometimes you got to just be a little bit smarter than who you're working with. So we had to choose an element to fully fund, and that was transportation. So this is from the board docs tonight. Their proposed cost-saving measures, because the division's operating budget was supposedly cut, two hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars for six unfilled bus driver positions. So if we fully funded exactly what they asked for in the FY24 budget for people transportation, why would they need to cut funding from transportation? You know, in my old line of work, when you smell smoke, there's usually fire, right? This is a lot of smoke. There is something horrendous going on with the way money is being spent in Lynchburg City Schools, which is why I am thrilled that we're able to provide a historic investment into the instruction category, more than has ever been spent. Matter of fact, in every category but one, that is the case. And they've either gotten more than they did last year or what they asked for. And I'm just extremely disappointed in the political postureing of the Lynchburg City School Division. I am extremely disappointed that they would use a taxpayer-funded communications and media department to try to sway public political opinion about what's going on in the school division. They're stoking fear on your dollars, and I will not stand for it. I am absolutely fed up with what I'm seeing from the leadership in the school division because it is completely inappropriate to use a taxpayer-funded organization that this public pays one hundred and nine million dollars to support to spread misinformation. That's what they're doing. And you know, the first time I got a hint about that going on was when they put their chief academic officer on a YouTube video trying to explain that the scores weren't going down, when the scores were going down, right? So I'm tired of the spin. I can tell you there's probably a lot of people in this room that know I don't like spin, right? And I'm not going to stand for it anymore. And I'm so happy because the other thing that they said was, hey, you know what? Guess what we can do? We can do fifteen forty-seven. That's pretty close. That's a thirty-five hundred dollar increase for a base teacher. That came out at today's Finance Committee meeting. And you know what? I think if they sharpen the pencil, they might even be able to get to fifteen fifty. Because I've looked at all the numbers, the money's there. But fifteen forty-seven is a good start, right? Trust me, when it comes to teacher pay, we got to get to Mars, right? We got to get to Mars. But we cannot get to Mars until we build a moon base. And we're building the moon base with this school's operating budget. We are going to raise the minimum starting wages for the classified employees that are making less than fifteen to fifteen, according to what they discussed today. We're going to raise teacher pay significantly, according to what they discussed today. And we are going to start putting the focus where it belongs, where our kids learn. You know, I got another email today, and I'm going to, I have to, I have to read this. This is from a city school employee, I'm not going to, I'm not going to mention her name. But she said, so she sent me a copy of the city school organizational chart, and also it had a lot of notes on it about how it's expanded since the beginning of the school year. But she said some of the questions that have been asked is, why did we have any vacant teacher positions when we had so many instructional coach positions? When we found out about this crisis, why weren't they assigning these people to the classrooms instead of overworking teachers and having them work through their planning time? The literacy and gifted coaches could have surely used their experience in struggling classrooms. It's very obvious to many LCS staff members that there are way too many captains and not enough crew. This is an organizational chart from the beginning of the year, and as you can see, we've already added extra spots. And so on. And they just found out that their IT techs, the ITRTs are now going to be coaches. They're making some changes there, too. And, you know, I know what they've been trying to push out, the media, they've been trying to blast their bullhorn to get the media to say the school budget's being cut. School budget's not being cut. Teachers are being prioritized, right? And quite frankly, I hope they understand the message that's coming from this governing body and the new school board that's going to come in in July, that learning and teachers are the priority, not high-paid bureaucrats. To supervise more high-paid bureaucrats, to supervise more high-paid bureaucrats, to supervise more high-paid bureaucrats that are also licensed educators and won't get in the classroom when we have teacher vacancies. We need to take care of the boots on the ground in every level of this government, whether it's our component units like Lynchburg City Schools or within the city organizational structure. That is what I said I would do from day one, that is what I intend to do. I will never leave the people that are actually providing the services behind, and they are the people that we need to rally behind. I am extremely proud of the categorical funding that was, been proposed for Lynchburg City Schools. I am so excited what I learned today, what they're going to be able to do with that. And the sky's not falling, and we're building a moon base.
Councilman Hoggerson?
Thank you. You know, I've been here for nineteen years, going on twenty years, and sadly, when we look back historically, we've seen every year more money go into the school division with less students, lower SOL scores, lower accreditation, less students, same number of buildings, and trouble retaining good teachers. You know, lots of times, it's almost like if you have a problem that you can kind of keep ringing that bell year after year and don't solve, you get to use that again next year. They've had, as Councilmember Mischin's pointed out in the last budget meeting, looking at where the money was going and where the money is, there were lots of ability to fix their instructional positions for years. And it was interesting that we had a couple of meetings ago where we had public comment, a school teacher got up and said, you know, I've been here teaching for eight, ten years, and I only got ninety dollars more in my pay. And that's why we need to raise taxes more and spend more. And I'm sitting there kind of scratching my head with public comment, we don't interject. But I'm sitting there thinking like, you recognize that was a different administration, right? Those are the people that said, oh, we needed all the money. And what are we doing now? We're doing it different. We're thankfully saying, we're going to actually put the money in instruction. I know people are saying, oh, my goodness, that's crazy, why should you do that? Well, we have to, because we've heard from teachers that have been there for nine and ten years. They haven't had the raise. What do we care about? We care about the classroom, making sure our kids are being educated. This budget gives record dollar amounts in instruction. It's a great thing. Also gives more money to the whole school division, but gives more money to the classroom. So with this, we want to make sure that we can see a complete change. Lots of, you know, we hear lots of people that have been here thirty years ago when EC Glass was rated one of the tops in the country. Now there's a two on Zillow. The two on Zillow hurts property values. It hurts our economic development. So I'm hopeful that with this budget, glad that the school board recognizes these are the funds they're getting, glad that this summer we'll be able to appoint three new school board members and that actually are going to really question, we heard some good questions to ask those school board members, and making sure that they're going to make some changes because it's critical. Gone are the days of just tax and spend. We need accountability, we need to make sure that we measure results and get a good outcome. Our graduation rates are too low, our SOL scores and tests are too low. We need to improve that. So I'm glad that we can categorically fund, and I think this is a great, a great first start. So thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Dr. Wilder?
I do not support it because, again, last year we gave, I think it was forty point eight million, I believe. This year we're going to thirty-nine point. You're correct. Excuse me, I think I have the floor, excuse me. I'm just stating the facts, okay? It's forty point eight million, and this year it's thirty-nine point four million. Over the several years, several situations, if you look at the schools that are educating children all over the country, it's more challenging to educate our children for special ed, special needs children, different, you get certain funds for smaller classrooms. Also, you have inner-city schools, so you have various issues with that. So there are various other reasons why the budget in the city might be different like in a county as far as what schools they're educating, because you have more challenges, more children. We have a poverty rate in our community that's higher than like this in Bedford County or certain other counties. So you have more challenges when it comes to poverty issues. So that's why certain issues might be higher in our public schools. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote, please.
I'm sorry, may I have to clear the board? Oh, it went through again. Could you do it again?
Go ahead and vote again, please.
So if we're going to vote twice, it doesn't mean we got to give double the money, right?
There it goes. Okay, the motion passes five two.
Okay. Consideration of introducing a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2024 to 2028 capital improvement program and appropriating the fiscal year 2024 capital budget. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes six one.
All right. Consideration of introducing a resolution appropriating fifty thousand dollars of the fiscal year 2024 reserve for contingencies for use by the city manager. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, second? Any discussion? No? Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
All right, consideration of adopting a resolution setting the personal property tax relief rate at thirty-five point eight one percent for January first, 2023 through December thirty-first, 2023. May I have?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I do have one thing. City manager? Remember when we had that meeting and you asked me what my legacy was going to be?
Yes, sir, I do.
Can you share with the room what I said I wanted my legacy to be?
Why don't you do it, sir?
He asked me what I wanted my legacy to be, and you know, I don't know what people say about that stuff, you know? Like I want the library with my name on it, or the monument, or whatever. And I looked at him and I said, I want to get rid of personal property tax because I hate the idea of having to pay taxes on a vehicle that you already own and paid sales tax on. So let's keep nickeling away at this one, too. That's all I got.
All right, let's vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Remember we amended the, yep, to add roll call to the end. I'm going to go out of order tonight, and we'll allow Councilman Hoggerson to start us off.
No, I don't.
That's pretty easy.
That was easy. You're the one that wanted it.
I didn't want it.
Okay.
I wanted for Councilmember Taylor.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Taylor, then go ahead.
Thank you all. Our city is in trouble. If you look at those videos where those young people were shooting, those boys looked like they were young boys. They were younger than eighteen years old. Looked like they was fifteen, sixteen years old. And I would like to ask my fellow members on council and city manager and our police department to look into setting up a curfew for our teenagers. That will help us a whole lot. It needs to be done. Whereas, you know, and I know Mr. Wilder, he have a bunch of teens at his place. It shouldn't interfere with kids out here being active in the community, playing basketball after school or with their parents or at a baseball game. But just walking the streets with, and even the face mask got to come off. COVID is over. You know, I heard that these guys was asked to remove their masks when they got in a cab, but refused to. Criminals hide, old criminals, young criminals. So we need to set up ghetto ordinance where we can ask them to remove their face masks. COVID is over, you don't need to be walking around with a full face mask anymore. And a curfew for our teens. We, can we work on this, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Bender?
Councilman Taylor, from several you, not, not just after the most recent event, the horrific event that's happened, there have been other things that each of you have discussed as it relates to public safety, not the least of which is a curfew. In hearing from each of you, different opportunities and ideas, and asking me as manager to help think a strategic step forward, I did solicit and ask our law enforcement community to include the sheriff, commonwealth attorney, police chief, and other departments to gather as early as next week with the expectation that we would come forward on the twenty-third with some options, not the least of which would be a curfew. I know that Commonwealth Attorney Bethany Harrison, together with Chief Sudema, has given some examples of communities that do have a curfew, to include Danville, Charlottesville, and I believe Roanoke?
Roanoke.
Yes, sir. And so we'll use those as models or examples and give you some options. So our intent is to meet in the ensuing weeks and make sure by the twenty-third that we're coming forward with options.
Full face masks. Do we need them? Do we need them?
I don't know how to answer what, because there are certain things that you can accept out, like we were positing, and I haven't seen the examples, but in talking to Chief Sudima before walking in here, there's certain things like up to eighteen years old, and with the exceptions being if you're going to church, going to a job, going to certain things, as to whether or not it could be as prescriptive as to ensure that someone's not wearing a mask. I'd have to work with Mr. Friedman and others about how prescript, how prescriptive we could be in a local ordinance for the city about a curfew.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I guess I could just piggyback on that, you know, and I think we looked at several of the ordinances, and I think you have an ordinance that, that I think would be a pretty good model and ready to go. So, just needs some, not much needs to be worked on it because there's gonna be times of sunset, there's gonna be times of win it is, and, and hopefully we can vote on it the twenty-third because school, I believe, gets out the twenty-sixth, so.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Any other roll calls?
And ma, I heard something in the, if I may, Madam Mayor, that I haven't seen the model ordinance, did you propose a sunset as to the curfew?
Sunset, so the, the, the curfew doesn't just continue forever?
Right. So, it's a sunset.
Specific timeframe that...
You're talking like sunset?
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
I, I, I thought, I was just making sure.
The sun rising?
Yeah.
Piggyback on that same thing. I'm gonna email you right now what Jeff and I discussed, and Larry, I've actually had Bethany Harrison email this back to me today and vet it, and I just told Matt about that, kind of combining all those things and looking at all the other ordinances from all the other localities, and taking apart those, taking the pieces away that didn't really fit for what we were trying to do, and kind of trying to pick the best pieces of it, so coming now. And I think this is a great idea. I think that we need to do what we can to curb this violence that, you know, a lot of it's being perpetrated by teenagers. Let's be honest, the, the last press release they did on the, the gang member arrests, there was seven or eight, I think, and it was one adult, and the rest were minors. And, you know, we, we, we gotta figure out a way to get to them. Like, that's the priority. We gotta get to their hearts somehow, but we also need to protect our citizens and use every tool at our disposal that we can while being mindful of people's liberty to keep people safe. Because what happened last week, I was there in the morning, I was on the scene in the morning. Larry called me and asked me to come out there. Seeing his little sister's wailing was, I don't miss working in public safety. I've seen it too much, and that, that, we, we gotta do what we can to stop this stuff and, and keep our citizens safe. Going on to my next thing, I also wanna take a look at what we can do as a body to investigate some things within the school division, going back to the public safety issue. I've had a couple conversations with some folks, particularly around a situation that involved the Virginia State Police asking to go into a school, I believe, and the discussion that was had was that the school division had to be able to notify the parents before they could allow them to go in there is kind of how this was brought to me, and, and this isn't, this is senior people in the, in the law enforcement community that I've had this discussion with, and I'm not gonna name any names. But, you know, if there's guns in a school, and there's law enforcement intelligence that says there might be guns in a school, and we wanna bring the dogs in to look for the guns, and the school division says, stop, we gotta send a letter home to the parents first. Guess what's not gonna be in school the next day? The guns, right? Or the drugs, or whatever it may be. And I have a serious problem if there's things going on that are putting the safety of our children at risk in the schools because we need to send letters home. If law enforcement has intelligence that there's something actionable that they need to go in and look for in the schools, they need to be able to go in and look for them. And if that is, if those decisions are being made at the top of our school division, that's what I wanna investigate, that's what I wanna find out. Because if it was a gun issue, imagine if that was one of those guns that killed one of these three kids this year, that a K-9 could have found. Okay? So, those concerns were brought to me. I have a, like I said, I, I don't know all the facts, that's why I'm saying I want to look into these facts, because if those decisions are being made at the top of our school division, that is, that is something that we need to be concerned about. That's all I have.
Okay, Dr. Feraldi?
I'll be brief. I wanna thank a city manager for, if it's okay, meeting with myself and the mayor and discussing some of the trends we're seeing and, and what solutions we might be able to roll out over the next few weeks. My mentality, at least from my perspective, is that we're at war, and we need to call it what it is, and take those off the streets who would seek to inflict sin, evil, and chaos. And I wanna thank the manager for helping me think bigger than just one perspective about how to target that, and I look forward to seeing what solutions we can dig into and, and try to bring, rein in some of this nonsense, so just wanted to say thank you.
Councilman Dolan?
I'll share my thoughts with the city manager later.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
Oh, yes. I know Pastor Cam and one community, one voice, they had a meeting on Thursday at six o'clock at the Jubilee Center in the gymnasium, just to address the crime issues and how the faith community can help as well, and some other nonprofit partners. So, I noticed on this Thursday at six o'clock. And also reference to the situation with the schools, usually they have so many lockdowns, they have a word of a gun, I just can't see them saying they can't come in and search for a gun. And they get lockdowns all the time, so, and do searches when I've been in school. So, I think that's something we should have, I would have preferred to have checked the school first before we put it out there, just to get more of the facts, otherwise we give out misinformation. But, again, that is, it's on this Thursday night. We're thankful the community, they come out last, and it's tonight for a basketball game at Jubilee Center to support the family, and the community is really valued together to support them during this horrible tragedy. So, we gotta continue to show love to one another and show love to our community. Most of the kids are hurting from not being loved, so we can do all of our part by being a mentor, being a big brother, being a big sister, and just show love. And my last thing is, I'd just like to thank the city staff for working on the budget. I mean, you have worked tirelessly, I mean, with all the emails flying back and forth and changing this and wanting this information, so I appreciate you and applaud you for working so hard for getting this budget together. I just, I, I appreciate you, and I thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you so much.
Great. And I also wanna say, say thank you for the International Festival that we pulled off on Saturday. It was beautifully done, and it was really cool to see all the different cultures that are represented in our city, and their beautiful dress, and the music, and the food was amazing, so that was a really great event for our community. I also appreciate y'all putting together the very last-minute National Day of Prayer event on the Monument Terrace steps that was, went really well and well-attended, and I appreciated everybody that showed up for that. And with that said, our meeting is adjourned, and our next meeting will be held May twenty-third, 2023, at four P.M. here in Council Chamber. Thank you so much.